Good morning. It's June 10th, 2025 here at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, please remain standing for the invocation from Christine Kaufman, Rescue Director with Crosspoint Community Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you for each of you and how you serve our community and for those that have gathered, if you'd join me in prayer. Father God, I thank you for this time, this allotted time where this group will gather. Lord, would you bless each man on this board, Lord, with their families, with the worries, the concerns that they may have coming, would that be able to be set at your feet as they take this time to listen with their ears and understand with their hearts the things that are important in our community? I thank you for their service. Lord, would you bless them. And for all those that are gathered, God, would you help us to seek the betterment of our community? Lord, we know what happens when tensions rise. I do want to just lift Los Angeles to you and the tensions that are there. God, would you bring peace? Would you bring resolution that we would all live in a way that cares and loves those around us? So, Lord, thank you for this time. Would you bring your wisdom and your grace and mercy upon this time in Jesus' powerful name? Amen.
Thank you for that prayer, Christine. Next up on the agenda is presentation from Modesto Children's Museum. Chelsea Webster, the CEO. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me out today, and I'm so glad to be here to give you all an update on the Modesto Children's Museum. But I believe, oh, I got to turn it on. That is a helpful. Okay, great. All right. First, I'd like to introduce myself to you all, as I have not had the pleasure of meeting everyone. My name is Chelsea Webster. I'm the CEO of the Modesto Children's Museum. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself before we get started. I do not come from the Central Valley. I actually come from central Ohio, but it is very similar to this area. I feel very familiar here in the Central Valley of California. And that is because instead of classic cars and almonds, I grew up with classic carousels and corn. And we were, I grew up in a small town, very similar to Duner, and I actually did, had no access to things like children's museums. That was not something we had in our county. And I really felt that need growing up. But I was lucky enough that my big city that was nearby, about 75 miles away, had the largest science center in the country, and that science center had a huge outreach program that visited my school once a year. And you can imagine that that was the best day of school for anybody in our school was the day that COSEI visited. We got to do hands-on programming. We got to learn, be curious, all these great things that happened in our school that day. It inspired me so much as a small child that I actually went on to get my education degree. I got a master's in education and ended up running the education department at that very same science center many, many moons later. So, when I tell you all that museums can change lives, I'm speaking personally, as it is something that is very near and dear to me, something that, one of those images up there, I actually got to eventually bring programming back to my very own elementary school eventually. So, it is just something that I've cared about for a very long time. So, when I learned that this community turned this lovely building into this one, I was so, so impressed because you all have really just changed the trajectory of childhood here in Stanislaus County. So, I'm going to talk today a little bit about the impact we've been able to have so far. We have only been open for 20 months. So, you know, we are still toddlers in our own right, but I'd like to talk about the impact we've had so far. I'd like to give an update on the funds that were given to the Modesto Children's Museum and the impact they've been able to have, as well as what's next for the Modesto Children's Museum. So, the first thing that we start with always is our mission. We want to enrich the lives of all children through creativity, critical thinking, and a love of lifelong learning. And when I was preparing to speak with you all today, I actually pulled up your mission and vision and values and all of that, just to, you know, get a sense of who you were and what you guys were focused on. And I thought it was so interesting. So, I pulled up both our visions and missions and values next to each other, and you'll see that the overlap is quite astonishing. We both care deeply about community. That is something that is at the core of what we do. We really care that all children, each person, entire families, everybody in our county is being, you know, reached by the services that we have, and that we want to be the best. So, you all want the community of choice here in Stanislaus County, a place worthy of calling home. We are striving to be world-class. And I thought it was quite wonderful that your priority is, one of your priorities is promoting lifelong learning. Well, that is literally what we do. So, that is all really, really, there are just a lot of great synergies in the work that is happening at the county and the work happening at the Modesto Children's Museum. So, I wanted to start today by sharing some of the economic impact that we've been able to have. So, we were lucky enough to work with Opportunity Stanislaus. They were able to provide a report on our economic output. So, we've had 140, or I'm sorry, 145.4 million in total economic output since we opened. We have had 325 jobs supported and over $18.3 million in tax revenue. And this is very significant, especially for being a young organization. So, just incredible amount of oversized impact by the children's museum in our first 20 months being open. But beyond the economic impact, I wanted to share with you all some of the impact that might not be as visible when, you know, you walk by and you see guests coming in and out of the building. We have really tried to integrate ourselves within the community. So, some of these photos here show us, we have been guest lecturing at Stanislaus State in their new museum studies program that they just launched. We've been supporting them. We have started and been involved in community programming. We have launched all sorts of educational programs, such as camps and field trips and early childhood nights and outreach workshops where we go out into the community. We've actually, alongside a couple of other museums here in the county, the Carnegie Arts Center and the Great Valley Museum, we have started a museum network of Central Valley museums, trying to bolster the work that we do together and sort of rise all ships. We have even started adult nights because while we are a children's museum, there's a little kid in all of us, as I'm sure you all know. And something that I'm very proud of is we've been able to partner with DreamWorks and Netflix, these nationally world-renowned brands, bring them here to Modesto, to the children's museum. So, just some incredible work that we've been able to do over these first couple of years. Beyond our, you know, programmatic, by the numbers, in our first fiscal year, we saw 83,000 children and families through the work that we were doing. And we are about to come up on our second fiscal, end of our second fiscal year, and we are projecting about 150,000 people will have been served by our second year. And you'll notice that we are really serving our county, but we are a regional destination. So, we are pulling visitorship. Our top visitorship is from across the entire central region. And these are the top most visited cities for the museum, and it's representative by the size of the city you see on the word cloud there. So, you'll notice that we're pulling from across the region here, but really truly focused on our Stanislaus County. Other impacts that we've been able to have, so Opportunity Stanislaus confirmed that we are a regional destination for folks coming into this area, spending their dollars here, spending their time here, bringing their families here. And not only, you know, regional destination, we are seeing national and international visitors to our museum. So, folks who happen to be in the area are stopping by Stanislaus County to make sure that this is part of their visit to California. We've also been nationally recognized in our field for the work we've been doing around professional development. So, it's really important to us that our workforce is strong. So, you know, people who come to us as museum guides, as their first part-time job, they're getting a lot of skills, and we're sending them back out into the workforce after their time with the Modesto Children's Museum, having been better for it. And something else that we're really proud of is that we have been able to offer tickets and memberships to other nonprofits to help them serve their mission. So, being a really good nonprofit partner is really important to us. So, we have donated tickets and memberships to other fundraisers, to folks in our community. So, just quite a bit of impact beyond just sort of the guest day-to-day experience. But I'd like to talk a little bit, you know, none of this is done alone. Great things are not done alone. So, I'd like to talk about the impact that the Stanislaus County investment has had on the Modesto Children's Museum. So, first, we were able to use the funds provided to help support, at least a portion of those funds were to help support our capital project. So, y'all helped build that beautiful building that you might see in downtown. And something that I thought you all should know is that your name is on the big slide in the museum, which is by far the favorite attraction within the museum. So, if you meet any kiddo who's been to the museum, you ask them if they've gone down that big slide, and they will talk you off for about 10 minutes. And don't take my word for it. There's a couple of reviews left by Ezekiel and I think Leila there on the screen. So, you'll notice that, you know, it is just something that is memory-making and joyful for the kids in our community. Beyond the capital project, we've been able to work with the lovely Stanislaus County Museum. Shout out to the museum folks in the crowd today, or the library folks, I'm sorry, here in the crowd today. We have formed a close partnership with the libraries through the funds that the Stanislaus County was able to offer to the museum. We've done outreach programming where we've been at every single library site. We've done educator events where we invited educators into our museum for free. And we've done shared professional development. The library actually came in and taught my entire staff how to do a premium storytime. So, you know, these are the skills that are really, really wonderfully shared between the two organizations. And beyond sort of our county partnership through the county funds, we've actually been able to do other things where we, during the solar eclipse event that happened, I think, in 2024 last year, we were able to go to every single library and provide viewing glasses and, you know, get this rich learning experience because of that relationship we had already formed through this, through these funds. But the biggest thing that the funds have really supported are the access programs to the library. So, the first access program I'd like to talk about is Discover and Go. That is a program that we work with the libraries. We provide memberships to the libraries, and anyone holding a Stanislaus County library card can rent a museum membership for the day, and then they get to come be a member for the day just using that library card. So, we have those at every single library across the county, and folks have been utilizing them over the last couple of years while that program has been active. So, that's a really cool way to make sure that everybody in our county has access to this great resource that is the children's museum. But the biggest impact we've been able to make with the funds is through Supporting Museums For All, which is a program that allows anyone who utilizes SNAP benefits to enter the museum at a discounted rate. That program is widely utilized across the country. It's something that many museums offer, but as we started offering it, we noticed something very unique. We are seeing, you know, about across the country, 5% of guests in a building are typically, in a museum are typically utilizing this program. In our museum, it's about 30% of our guests that are utilizing Museums For All programming. And while after, you know, we opened, we sort of saw our general admission, that big bump, it sort of normalized a little bit. Our Museums For All guests stay really steady. We have not seen that drop off at all since we've opened, which showcases that this is a huge need in our community. I think that's, there's a couple of reasons why that is. First, I think we fill a big desert. Museum programming like the children's museum doesn't really exist along the Central Valley. So, this is something that is really serving a need. Also, our folks that utilize SNAP and EBT are often not as mobile. So, they are not, you know, able to drive out to the Bay Area to get a similar experience to the Modesto Children's Museum. So, we are really serving a need here in the community through this program. And this is our county here, and you'll notice that, or something that when we dug into the data that we thought was really, really interesting, is that each district is actually showing a proportional percentage of guests utilizing this program. So, Chairman, your district, District One, is about 10% of our population. We'll see about 10% of our Museums For All users come from your zip codes, which is something that just really shows us that this is not just being utilized by those living very close to the museum, but across our entire county. So, something I wanted to talk about briefly is that one of our values is that community is worth the investment. And I believe you all believe that, too, you know, pretty aligned with your values. So, that to us means that we care a lot about investing in the community with the resources that we have. So, how can we offer tickets? How can we offer time? How can we offer our expertise? And we really look to our community to invest back in us. And this is more important now than ever. The couple of programs, national programs that we typically turn to for funding are not able to provide those funds at present. So, the Institute of Museum and Library Services has really cut its grant funding as of late, as well as the National Endowment for the Arts and the National Endowment for the Humanities, all of which have traditionally supported museums like ours. So, for now, if we wanted to grow and sustain these programs that we are currently offering, we will need to look to local community for support. So, this is where I believe we have opportunity to partner beyond the funds that were given, as we have exhausted all of the funds originally given to the museum for these programs. And so, the opportunity moving forward is to continue some of that strategic partnership that we've been able to build in the early days. So, continuing our museum partnership with the libraries, we've also have conversations with the workforce development, Stanislaus County Workforce Development. We've talked to the Stanislaus Transit Authority. How do we continue to break barriers and build interesting relationships across our county? So, I think that is going to be something that is ongoing. And if you have a crazy idea, please throw it at me, because we're new enough that we don't say no to anything yet. You know, we're just, we're excited about all the ideas. And then beyond strategic partnership, an opportunity for sustained annual funding from the county would be something that would help to maintain some of these programs ongoing. But I think the true solution to our ongoing need and to grow some of these opportunities would be through an endowment from the county. I believe that a $6 million endowment would provide both sustaining support for these ongoing programs, as well as allow us to grow that access support to new audiences that we have really aspirational hopes for. So, the investment that we have aspirations to, we have not been able to do any of this work yet, but one of the things we would love to be is a Blue Star Museum. That is a museum that allows veterans or active military to enter our museum, again, at a deeply discounted rate or for free with their families. We also are not currently able to offer field trip scholarships. That's not something that we have the capacity to do at present. We'd love to increase our outreach programming, have free community days, provide senior programming, as well as continue camp scholarships. So, right now, we offered our first-ever camp scholarships. You'll see a few applications there on the screen, one of which is, I'm so excited for camp. We were able to offer these through fundraising within our community, and it was very exciting this year to be able to offer these camp programs, or these camp scholarships. They filled up almost immediately, but we don't have sustaining support for that program. So, that is something we're offering this year in hopes that we will be able to offer it in the future as well. So, this is some of that aspirational investment that I believe with an endowment, we would be able to grow some of these programs. So, in conclusion, the Modesto Children's Museum was, is by and for the community. So, we've had profound economic, educational, regional impact, and we are just getting started. So, we hope to have some more. We believe that community is worth the investment. We think that local sustaining support is needed now more than ever. And through the Stanislaus County, we have been able to have countywide impact from the start. So, that is something that is baked into what we are doing, and we really hope to maintain that and grow it within our county. So, that is it from me today, and I would love to answer any questions that you may have. And yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for having me.
Chelsea, thank you for the presentation. Any questions from the board?
Just one question. Like, what is the age group? Because you're having adult nights.
Yeah.
So, I know the age group is.
Yeah, anybody. But our typical, we, our exhibits are for, we say, 0 to 11, but we also offer teen volunteer programming because, again, our mission is to reach all children. So, that is for 12-year-olds through 17-year-olds to come into the museum and support us in sort of a different way. But our exhibits are designed for that elementary to early middle school age group.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
Chelsea, thank you. Great, great presentation. I think I'm on. Thank you.
I just turned it on.
Appreciate that. Great presentation. Thank you for all you're doing. I just wanted to go back to the one slide where you talked about the funding that you've lost from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. How much are we talking about annually that you were getting from those three endowments?
So, we, at one year, we were eligible to start applying for these programs. We applied for about $400,000 in support, and all of those grants have since been taken off of their docket. So, we had not yet received any federal support as we were not operationally at a year.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And thank you guys for all you're doing. Good morning.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just wanted to give you some praise, some great comments. Me and my family have enjoyed the museum.
Thank you.
We've gone on several, you know, several visits. It's a great and wonderful experience. Just keep up all the good work. My only pet peeve and criticism, just because the community is in my district, is that Grayson is not listed with the communities. But next time.
Next time.
I have to represent Grayson.
Okay.
I want to be doing my job as supervisor, but that is my only critique.
Okay.
You guys do wonderful work. Keep up all the great things you guys are doing.
Thank you so much. And I believe my board president here would just like to say a couple of words.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Amy Jeffries. I am a Modesto native, class of 01 of Modesto High. I'm a local attorney, and I am the president of the children's museum this year. And I just wanted to reiterate and thank you all for your support. This community has seen, as you can see, statistical improvements, benefits from the children's museum. I have three young children myself who have ranged from pre-K to the teen volunteer program, and seeing the impact that that has had on them and the community, and the generosity of the community coming together to support this in this area has been monumental. So, I'd like to thank you, and I hope that we can continue to partner and have your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, Chelsea, and just meeting the board president. I got the opportunity and privilege to sit down with Chelsea a couple of months ago, and one thing that really stuck out for me that is highlighted in the presentation is, although it is located in downtown Modesto, the regional reach that it has, not only for the county, but as present on the slide, that it's becoming kind of a regional draw from other communities. And that's always something that's very encouraging when it's something that is utilized not only throughout the county, but throughout the region. And we're getting more and more things such as the children's museum and the Gallo Arts Center where people are utilizing them on a regional basis. So, great job to your team and hope more visitors continue to come. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. Great presentation. All right. Moving on, public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record. Direct all comments towards the dais. And so that is fair for every speaker, keep the comments to five-minute time limit. Our first speaker card is Landon Whitney, I'm sorry about that, Senator Maria Alvarado Gil's office.
Oh, thank you, board. My name is Landon Whitney. I'm with Senator Maria Alvarado Gil's office. It's good to see so many friendly faces and colleagues, former colleagues in previous endeavors. Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak this, speak this morning in regards to a nonprofit that our office has honored as the Riverbank Nonprofit of the Year. We've been conducting these presentations in city councils, board of supervisors throughout the district. As I'm sure you guys are familiar, we do have 13, we represent 13 counties and 21 cities. So, we do make the rounds, but it's always good to be in Modesto, always good to be in Stanislaus County. So, with that, I'd like to highlight Cambridge Academies, which, I want to make sure I get this correct. It's a nonprofit that was founded in 2004 to create a positive difference in the lives of individuals who desire a better future. Cambridge Academies has strived to facilitate educational, economic, social, ethnic, and racial equity in partnering with the city of Riverbank in 2024. The organization has offered its Enterprise Restart Program, which specializes in transformative programs for homeless individuals who are able to participate in daily classes that consist of engaging activities and collaborative projects that strive to foster personal accountability, emotional intelligence, and self-control. So, and also, it's all about creating that successful mindset. So, one of the things that we see, you know, we see all the problems in government at whatever level they may be. But, you know, I'm sure the board is very familiar with the fact there are a lot of good people doing a lot of good work in our communities. And so, we just wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge them. Do I have, if I could, looking for Haley? There we are. Thank you. Haley, on behalf of Senator Maria Alvarado Gil, I'd like to present this resolution to you honoring Cambridge Academies as the 2025 Riverbank Nonprofit of the Year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Very appreciated. On behalf of the staff, of the students, and all the different partners that we've had, not only Riverbank, but other communities and other individuals who are in the community that have partnered with us to make things happen.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And thank you, board, for your indulgence.
Take a picture. Yeah.
Thank you.
Next up will be our Director of Parks and Recreation, Tara Chumley.
Good morning. Tara Chumley, Director of Parks and Recreation. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
I wanted to come up and share some exciting information. We have our 29th Annual Firework Celebration coming up on June 28th at Woodward Reservoir. And the gates open at the reservoir about 6:00 AM with the fireworks show beginning at 9:30. We're thrilled to welcome residents of all ages for a day of recreation, community, and celebration. We're going to have some food vendors on site with some favorites like shaved ice and tacos and some other goodies throughout the day. We easily reach full capacity for the fireworks show, so we encourage you to purchase advanced tickets. They're $30 for the day, and we have that available for purchase on our website at stancountyparks.com. And we're just really excited for another successful celebration and truly appreciate your continued support in making this event possible. We do have some flyers that are over in the back by the board agenda items. And so, grab that information. You'll have the website as well. In addition, we're also excited to share, we have our rec van summer schedule out that already begun last week, and it runs through August. And we encourage anybody who's interested to visit our parks. We are at Salida Park on Mondays, Fairview Park on Tuesdays, Segusta Park on Wednesdays, Sterling Ranch Park on Thursday, and Burbank Paradise Park on Fridays. And that is operated by our partners at the Police Activities League. It runs 12 to 5:00 PM daily. Thank you.
Great. Tara? And all that can be found on your website, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next up is Director of Public Works, David Lehman.
Good morning. I thought I'd just share some, good morning, board. Dave Lehman, Public Works Director. Thought I'd share some good news from Seventh Street Bridge from last week. We got a right-of-way cert last Thursday. Got a call from Jose Luis at StanCog late Friday afternoon, and we're recommended for approval on LPP, the Local Partnership Program, for $15 million. We're going to be working this summer on a cost-sharing agreement with the city of Modesto, and then also with Caltrans on the high-cost bridge agreement. Assuming we can all get all that done in about three or four months, we should be out to bid then for Seventh Street Bridge this fall. And God willing, if the Tualmy River doesn't rise, we'll be under construction next spring. So, just wanted to let you guys know. Pretty excited about it. We've been working on it for 15 years. Thank you.
Dave, what else do we get? Did we get something else?
Yeah, $67 million recommended for 132 from Dakota to Gates. So, that's super exciting, too. So, I think that could be under construction as soon as 2027. So, things are happening. We're flying.
Good work. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Great update, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Next up is Gavin Bruce.
Morning, supervisors. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Gavin Bruce. I'm a lifelong resident of Modesto, lived here pretty much my whole life, and the last 10 years I've had the opportunity to work with a number of nonprofits in the community. I'm currently working with Valley Improvement Projects here, based just here downtown, and I wanted to mention that in my last 10 years of working with various nonprofits, I hear the word innovation kind of thrown around a lot, and thinking about innovation, usually I think we think of it in the private sector, but it's also something that applies to the public sector as well. And I think one opportunity for applying innovation in the public sector is with regards to our local task force on solid waste. So, VIP's been working on a zero-waste plan, just trying to come up with solutions and build partnerships for how to divert waste to our landfill, especially organic waste. There's a lot of food waste that currently ends up in our landfill, emitting methane, which is a more potent greenhouse gas than carbon, so than carbon dioxide. So, we'd really like to engage with the local task force on solid waste, and instead of that task force just merely complying with state regulations like AB 939 and SB 1383, really turning that task force into a zero-waste task force that can come up with solutions across our communities to educate our communities about what we consume, about where it ends up once, you know, once we throw it in the trash or in the recycling or what have you. And so, yeah, working on education programs and also focusing on reducing what we consume and reusing before we even go to recycle. There's a reason why it's in that order. So, there are some vacancies on that task force, and I just wanted to let you all know about that, and that, you know, we need to really have those, emphasize having those regular meetings and not pushing them off because of lack of quorum or things like that, making sure that we fill the vacancies on that task force, and then also focusing on a zero-waste plan as opposed to merely complying with what the state is making us do. So, I just wanted to mention that. I'll be reaching out to you all as well, maybe, you know, talk a little further about these concepts, and also talking to the Department of Environmental Resources. So, just wanted to mention that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gavin. That is the last public comment card that I have. Anyone else like to make public comment about an item that is not on the agenda? Stephen, come on. I had you up here, but it's for 6-1.
That's okay. We'll get to that later.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the board. The reason I wanted to speak in public comment is just to remind everybody about safety and hazards of railroad crossings, because we had a tragic incident that happened yesterday out in Empire. All of us have been caught at railroad crossings, and there's just nothing we can do except twiddle our thumbs and wait for the train to clear. Unfortunately, out in Empire, where the BNSF tracks cross Yosemite Boulevard, which is a notorious crossing, because there's no way to get around it, someone went around the gates and unfortunately was hit by an Amtrak train. Now, we all know that trains don't stop on a dime. There was nothing the engineer could do, and it was just a tragic situation that was 100% avoidable. In this day and age where we're all super busy, we all have 18 things that we have to get done at once, we just know if we get caught by the gates, we just got to take a pause, breathe, because there's no way to get around it, and unfortunately, trying to beat those gates is, can lead to a lot of tragedies, and we just want to look to avoid that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Any others like to make comment about items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move, oh, sorry about that. Morning.
Good morning. First, love Moche Mu. Love the Children's Museum. It is fantastic. Taking my nephew there, which if they need funding, I'm all for it, and it makes me think a lot of times we keep putting funding into policing and military equipment when we need to be funding programs for our children and the youth in our community. And that also leads to item 25, approval of agreements with Epic for the automated license plate readers for some cities. Let's put that money towards children. Put that money towards things we need in our community. We don't need license plates readers. So, big item that we have recently seen is our very own sheriff being arrested for sex trafficking. Sex trafficking is defined as the action or practice of illegally transporting people from one country or area to another for the purpose of sexual exploitation. It is disgusting to see that people in positions of power in the sheriff department have been taking their power to a level of such disgust. Kidnapping, taking people for sexual favors so they can get out of a ticket, and I don't think we should tolerate this whatsoever. As CBS reported that unfortunately, the, he was, May 29, they had their article that came out, and that the sheriff's office had been investigating Morales since March after a person who was arrested reported to Houston Police that a deputy, while allegedly on duty, was engaging in sexual misconduct. Investigators have been verifying the claims, gathering evidence, and locating alleged victims. Morales was placed on modified duty on May 6 and was stripped of his peace officer powers while the investigation was ongoing. Then on Tuesday, so this is again, report from May 29, the sheriff's office announced that Morales was arrested when he showed up for work. That takes way too long. He could have been sex trafficking people during that time. We need to remember that Israel Morales is not the only person engaged in sex trafficking. We know there are other people in positions of power, perhaps locally, engage in sex trafficking or exploiting people, soliciting people who are being sex trafficked. Where is the accountability? We are demanding a sheriff's community police review board, as there is one in Modesto. We have seen time and time again what happened in Patterson with the sheriff taking out-of-hand actions towards people, hurting people. We are seeing this time and time again with our sheriff and other police officers throughout this county, and it is time that we stop this disgusting abuse of power, abusing people, and just go about our day. When will there be accountability? When will people in power be fired, be put in jail for their abuses of power here? It is disgusting to see that vulnerable people continue to be abused in this county, whether they're being jailed for being unhoused, whether they're exercising their rights, and especially if they are just being pulled over for a random traffic, perhaps even just went through a stop sign. So, we are demanding for a police review board. We need to reallocate funding for the sheriffs and the police towards community efforts to keep our community safe, whether that be parks and rec, whether that be more education on environmental issues. These are the things that are important for us in this community. And I just want to reiterate again, he has been a sheriff's officer since 2018, Israel Morales. How long? We need to know how long this abuse is going, and we need to see the accountability. Thank you.
If you would just state your name for the record.
Roberta.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Bianca.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. Bianca Lopez with Valley Improvement Project. I'm also here again to advocate for a civilian review board of the sheriff's department. I missed other public comments, but I'm sure that you've already heard several reasons why we need a civilian review board. We don't trust the sheriffs. We don't trust police. A civilian review board would help create a trustworthy network. So, I don't know if you're familiar with the ones in Modesto. When there is an incident, the civilian review board members, at least the chairperson, gets to go to the scene or is privy to some details. They are our eyes and ears. We trust the board members to get information and bring it back to the community so that we're not in the dark about what happened or what is going on. Then, they also ask questions for the community members so that our questions can be answered. So, they are a bridge from community to the police department, and that's all we're asking for here for the sheriffs. We need a bridge that can communicate and that can help bridge the trust between the agencies. I don't think that we will ever have 100% trust in police, because we know what they are capable of doing, and we know what they've done to our communities. So, we're never going to be completely in trust, but we can help build a bridge that can create a line of communication and to try to build trust with community members. Transparency is key, and we need to have an independent auditor who is going to be asking the right questions and reviewing incidents in a manner that is professional and that can give back to the community. If the police, if the sheriffs don't have anything to hide, then I don't see why they would be against it. That's what they tell us when they pull us over, right? Well, I'm going to search your backpack. If you've got nothing to hide, then let me just search your backpack, right? If they have nothing to hide, and if they're just doing their job, and they're all good apples, then let's implement a civilian review board to wean out those other bad apples. We ask for you to put this on the agenda so that you can actually take a vote on it. But whatever you need to make an informed decision, the community is willing to put together. So, what we did for the civilian review board, or to bring a civilian review board to the City of Modesto, was that we hosted town hall meetings and workshops specifically with the agencies that would be or are currently in civilian review boards in different cities, in different counties, in different states, so that they can answer your questions. What does that look like? What's it for? It's not a got-you moment, right? It's not to get the cops. It's to create a system that's going to allow for proper communication and transparency and accountability. That's all we ask, that you inform yourself so that you can make an informed decision, but we're also asking for you to make a decision. You have the ability to implement a civilian review board for the sheriff's department. You have the power, and you should, is what the community, your constituents are saying. We want to see that discussion here in public, and we want you to make a choice. And to all the residents here listening, or those who are watching now or later, this will come. We will have either the county to bring a civilian review board to the sheriffs, or we'll be on the ballot for all of you to vote on, and we are confident that we will be able to shape what that civilian review board looks like on our own without your support. So, here's an opportunity for you to help shape that with the community and vote it so that we can have a civilian review board for the sheriff's department. Many times, many stories have been coming up to this microphone to share with you all about the violations of the power of the sheriff's department. We have sheriffs who are harassing people in their homes. We have sheriffs who are terrorizing communities. We have sheriffs who are ignoring racist threats in our communities. We need accountability for these sheriffs, and we could do it with you, or we can do it with just the people. Mr. Withrow, your time is up. Somebody else is going to be running in your position, and the folks in West Modesto
Thank you, Bianca. Your time is up.
Believe in civilian review boards. And we will put somebody in that position that agrees with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments about items not on the agenda? Come on up.
Thank you, board. I'd like to speak in support of an idea that we've heard discussed recently, a civilian and police review board for our sheriff's department. I think we've seen great success with it in the City of Modesto. Hope meets right here in this chambers. Chris, I would love to see every single one of you at the next community police review board meeting for the City of Modesto, June 18, 5:30. I think it'd be a great learning opportunity. In particular, when we look at the recent incident with Israel Morales abusing his position as the sheriff's deputy, kidnapping, sex trafficking, sexually assaulting members of our community, that really just fills me with a sense of disgust. I grew up in an unincorporated part of the county. When I called 911, I didn't get MBD. I got the sheriff. And growing up, that was a relationship of trust, and I feel like that's something that I've really seen eroded throughout my lifetime, and I think we're seeing a pattern of events, and certainly recently, that really chip away at that trust, and I think a civilian police review board would be a great way to try and build trust in the community. I am glad to see that our sheriff has come out and condemned Israel Morales's actions, hence noting that, and I quote, "He was deeply troubled and outraged by Morales's actions and condemned the behaviors described in this case. Such conduct is reprehensible, criminal, and a violation of the public's trust," unquote. To that end, I would hope that the sheriff, and really the whole sheriff's department, would try and put those words into action so that we know as a community that it's more than just the PR spend needed to say, "Oh, I condemn this because I'm supposed to condemn this." If it really is a condemnation, it needs to be met with action more than just words. To that end, I would say that we looked at mission statements earlier today with our lovely presentation from Moche Mu, who, I pulled up the sheriff's department mission statement. The sheriff's department believes in protecting our communities by building trust, reducing crime, and promoting safety through enforcement, prevention, and education. What better way to educate the community about the rights we have? What better way to prevent crime than to build trust with our sheriff's department? We see time and time again, when you look at the psychology of moments where law enforcement are interacting with members of the public, when there is not trust, the actions that people take are more likely to be impulsive, more likely to be the kind of thing that makes an officer feel like they're in an uneasy situation. When you build trust, people are safer. We deserve a safe community. To that end, I'd also highlight that our sheriff's department lists a number of core values as part of their mission and their vision, and their first core value is respect. They say, "Respect for yourself, the badge, the department, and the community." If the sheriff's department truly respects the community, then they should be in full support, probably the number-one supporter of this idea. Second core value they list is teamwork, recognizing and building on the strengths of all. We recognize that we have to work together to achieve our goals. It's lifted directly from their website. Seems like teamwork is what we're asking for. Their third core value is integrity, commitment to honest, trustworthy, transparent policing, and fairness, and consistency by holding ourselves to the highest standards of moral and ethical conduct. The highest standards of moral and ethical conduct sure sounds to me like we would need a community police review board, like we would need an independent auditor to oversee that as well. OIR group has done great work as the independent auditor with the community police review board in the City of Modesto, but I would trust the judgment of the board of supervisors to find the independent auditor group that they felt was best for the community in that regard, merit and community input, of course. Fourth core value listed is innovation. We've heard that word come up in this chamber already today. Innovation, and sheriff's department says, "We will be creative and innovative in our delivery of professional law enforcement service." If anything, I'd say right now the sheriff's department is behind the times. We've seen the City of Modesto, as well as many other communities throughout California and throughout the country, have civilian oversight, and that is lacking. I feel the sheriff's department is failing in their charge in this way. And the last, but certainly not the least, perhaps the most important core value listed is courage. On the sheriff's department website, they say, "Courage is not the absence of fear, but the initiative to make tough decisions under stress and pressure." I don't feel this should be a tough decision. If this is a tough decision for the sheriff's department, that's a concern for me as a member of this community. This should be an easy, common-sense decision for more accountability. I would hope every member of the public support this, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for the board of supervisors, Chris, to come out in support of this, put your names behind it, show that you also value what your constituents are saying, show that you value safety in our community, show that you support our sheriff's department, show that you support safe streets. We're not going to get there just by hoping things get better. We're not going to get there by putting platitudes when we're asked for comment in the Modesto, B. We're going to get there through community work. That's a community police review board, and that's an independent auditor. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could just... If you could just state your name.
Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Any others would like to speak? Come on up.
Good morning, Board. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Carla and I have been a resident since I was born here in Stanislaus County. Personally, I've never had any, like, bad interactions with our sheriff's department, but seeing this new news is actually very scary, given that we're all adults and professionals here. If we were to be in that type of situation like Israel Morales, we would definitely be placed on administrative leave. And that's what I'm asking you as a constituent of this county, that whenever this issue arises, especially with people in power, like the sheriffs, that please immediately put them on administrative leave for any employee, any sheriff's department's employee undergoing criminal investigations. And here, a lot of my other constituents, a lot of my other colleagues, friends, have been asking for a community police review board. And I believe that that is actually a really good step in holding our sheriff's department accountable and having trust in our sheriff's department again. On top of that, I do ask that, I know this is more of a citywide issue, but I feel like you guys could definitely be proponents of this, having more accountability measures and the memorandums of understandings with the sheriff's department of each city in this county would be definitely helpful. We would like, I know, like, a lot of sheriff's department, and I'm not that knowledgeable in this, I'm more knowledgeable with Modesto Police Department, but we would not want to see a strong clause like binding arbitration when it comes to excessive police force. I know we've been focusing on Israel Morales because of his criminal charges, but we also have incidents of police violence and brutality. A lot of our sheriffs do not get held accountable for those actions. Sometimes it escalates a lot and we saw that recently in Patterson. And I didn't like the way the city responded by the district attorney throwing all of those legal charges towards Joshua when, like, we saw, the community saw, it was clearly the sheriff escalating. So, I'm asking you guys to please, like, be proponents, be advocates for our next memorandum of understanding, to hold our sheriffs accountable when they're using excessive police force, when they're using brutality. And if they're undergoing criminal investigations, to please put them immediately on administrative leave. Anyone in here, in their jobs, if they were involved in that, they would have done that as well. They should have suffered those consequences, so why shouldn't the sheriff as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others would like to make public comment? Come on up.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Giancarlo from the Central Valley Black Indigenous People of Color Coalition, CBIPOD. And I'm also going to reiterate what some of my comrades have mentioned. We're here to talk about Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department because there's been multiple incidents of excessive use of force, police brutality, and abuse of power. And I'm going to repeat what happened in Patterson. The community had been greatly impacted when Deputy Helms had used excessive use of force against Joshua Rhodes and his partner for a traffic stop. And because he had an attitude, which I don't think would lead, really constitute, really justifiably, tasing him and his girlfriend, punching him, and then pulling a gun out on him, that's really unnecessary. And then, Houston recently has been heavily impacted by the sheriffs with Israel Morales being charged for multiple counts of sexual assault, soliciting prostitution, kidnapping, and false imprisonment. And yes, it's very appalling that he was being investigated in March, but still being able to patrol and stuff, and that didn't change till about May. And also recently, what we had with Sergeant Hutzel's recent murder of his own wife. And the fact that somebody was able to move up to the extent of sergeant in a position of power, and people that do that, that definitely doesn't make anybody feel safe. And that's the issue that we have here, folks, is that we want accountability. We want the people to have a say. We want that transparency. And I think basically condemning the behaviors is one thing and just charging Israel Morales is one thing, but no, we need actual change. We need preventative measures, folks. And we want y'all to engage with us in that. The community police review board is something that we have here in Modesto that can support transparency and improve levels of trust. But, we want one for Stanislaus County sheriffs, okay? Because I think if people are being policed, people have the right to have a say, okay? Especially when incidents like this come out. That, I think, is true democracy, right? If not, it's just a system of oppression. And yeah, we want also accountability measures to ensure, all right, that these policies and the way that the Stanislaus County sheriffs work, such as letting a guy patrol the streets while he's being under investigated for horrible acts, doesn't happen. And so, in our next memorandum of understandings, you know, we want support, you know, to really push for improved memorandum of understandings so that cities can hold the Stanislaus County sheriffs more accountable, okay? And not only that, though, but in order to prevent what happened with Israel Morales, we want the Stanislaus County sheriffs to basically have immediate administrative leave for any sheriff's department employee undergoing criminal investigations. It obviously shows, all right, that this person may not be safe to be out in the community with a gun and with the right to detain people. And the fact that these folks became deputies, the fact that Hutzel became sergeant, you know, we want an effective vetting system in the sheriff's department to prevent the hiring of dangerous people, okay? We want the trust, okay? We're not here to just hate. We here, we want to feel safe, you know? We want to say, we want that transparency, you know? And we want to work with y'all about that. Come to the next community police review board. We need more people there. You can see how it works. And we would love to work with y'all to kind of have one developed for the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department, okay? And with that too, since, I don't know, maybe I have a little bit more time, CBIPOD stands against ICE. And we don't want them here in the community because they terrorize communities, they separate families. Whether you're documented or not, that doesn't matter. You deserve to be there for the fact that you are a human being. You can contribute to society, but that doesn't matter, okay? We are all working class folks who can contribute, but we are human beings as well, okay? They all deserve to be here, okay? And I don't think documentation matters and ICE does not keep us safe. And we know that the ADCLU has shown that there has been gray area, like collaborations between ICE and the Stanislaus County sheriffs, okay? And we don't want that. That does not help in any way at all. It terrorizes communities and separates families. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all.
Any other comments on items not on the agenda? Come on up.
Morning.
Good morning. The city of Patterson and the sheriff's department are all corrupt. They have illegally towed my car and my trailer. I have the receipts that the registration was paid on time. And just, what they're having also is, who towed it was a community service officer? And that's what they're doing, they're having community service officers, because now there's two. And I thought one of them was a deputy, but she wasn't. Tow vehicles, and if they're, by law, they're not supposed to, they're not legally authorized to do that. But then also, the sheriffs will also have code enforcement, right, parking tickets, which they're not authorized either. And I'm not sure if that's how, or the reason why they couldn't look up the DMV to see that it was paid, but I'm sure that they did know because the community service officer that did tow it, he says that he has access to the data, the database, which that's not legal either because you have to be authorized. So, Patterson, the sheriff's department has said that it's okay if they, if other people fill in, like the code enforcement fills in for them. But it's not because Patterson has a contract that we pay, you know, the citizens pay out to have a certain amount of deputies working, you know, a certain amount of, you know, fill the positions. And so, they're having other departments fill that are lower pay, that have their own depart, you know, their own duties to fill in. It's fraud, right? And I have all the documents too showing that I did pay it. And what the deputy, well, not deputy, the community service officer did was, for the reason why he towed my trailer, he crossed out on the notice, 72, and he wrote in 24 hours for being part, leaving consecutive leave. And so, and honestly, it's like, you only have to count to three, because it's three days. And he towed it before the three days, before the 72 hours was up. And he, I went through all their, like, little hoops in order to try to get it back and they just keep refusing. They keep, I contested it and then they just denied it without giving a reason, which is not according to the vehicle code either. That's a violation, because they have to give you a reason. I went to, I filed a claim with the city and the sheriff's department. And the city, I heard back, they denied it, they refused it, but I haven't heard anything with the sheriff. But now, and I've spoken with the, so, I've talked to the district attorney to get, to have charges filed, but they said that I need a police report, but they're not going to do a police report on themselves because the fact that they keep being able to, basically, what is the, manage themselves is just kind of ridiculous. Like, of course, they're always going to be found not guilty, right? And just like the other people were saying when it came to the sexual misconduct, the deputy Jonathan, I forgot his last name, he was a correct, the guy in the jail, and he was sleeping with the inmate. He was arrested but never charged. And that's illegal, that was illegal, that was against the law for him to do that. And you guys had a meeting, not you guys, but somebody had a meeting, I guess the district attorneys, and they were like, "Oh, well, it was consenting adults," so they didn't press any charges. He was arrested, but no charges were ever pressed. And that, we should be holding the deputies a lot higher than what we are because they should know better, they should know the law, right? And when they break it, they should be charged. There should be charges, not just being administrative leave. And also too, they think that's like a vacation because they get paid for it. And I don't think that they should be getting paid for that either. But, does that mean I'm wrong?
Thank you for your comments. Any others like to make public comment about items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move to the consent calendar. We do have a request from Supervisor Chance Condit to pull B1, B5, and B8 for discussion. And I do have public comments for B3 and C3. Which one? B3 and C3. Any other supervisors like to pull anything up to consent? So, we'll have public comment on B3. Jody. Bianca. Bianca? Save it. C3, Sam Trun.
Morning, Sam.
Good morning, members of the board. Sam Trun, Department of Public Works. Here to give a shout out to a couple of community members along with a couple of staff members regarding this item, the West Modesto Sewer Area 9 Water Board Grant. As a requirement of the grant, the county was obligated to collect a certain amount of right of entry agreements and interest surveys. Six to eight months ago, it was grim, but with the help of a couple of community members, we were able to collect the needed amount. We needed approximately 160 ROEs and interest surveys. I invited Florentino and Josephina Tolecula to come today, but I don't think I see them here. But they, with their own time and resources, went out, walked the community, helped us collect the needed number of ROEs and interest surveys. They came to outreach meetings, checked on status, to see if there was any help that we needed further. So, I wanted to commend them and thank them for those efforts. Also, wanted to thank Lucas Alberto, who took a stack of ROEs at the last outreach meeting to community members and neighbors and people he knew and some he didn't know, which is knocked on doors. And he got us over the finish line. So, we were able to submit our grant, it was deemed complete, and we are here today to receive, to get board approval, to receive this $20 million to improve the community. So, just wanted to thank those folks. Also, wanted to recognize some staff members, you know, the planning team, self-help, Public Works team, specifically Chuck Cobolo and Debbie Trahill, who acted as project managers and did a lot of work coordinating with the water board, attending all the outreach meetings, well, putting on the outreach meetings, I should say, along with reviewing technical docs and collecting surveys and ROEs and made this whole thing happen. It's been a long time coming and I just thought we should commend and thank, thanks the team and all the community members involved in making this happen. With that said, I thank you for letting me speak today.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Great work by all.
Thank you.
All right. Going back, Bianca, you wanted to make comment on B3.
Oh, yeah, I wanted clarification, sorry. If I could get clarification on what is the amendment? The attachment here on the agenda item isn't specific on what the amendment is? Because it probably is, but I didn't get a chance to thoroughly assess that. This is an amendment to a current policy.
Bianca, if you want to check in at the back table to go over it with you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We want to, let's take a vote on all the rest except for B1, B5, and B8. If I have a motion?
Motion to approve all consent items other than B1, B5, and B8. Second?
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. B1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to get some clarification on B1, just kind of a general overview for the public. Past practices, what have we been doing up to this point? I understand that we're being mandated to have this technology. So, I just wanted to educate myself on this item further and just kind of understand the reasoning and rationale and the need for it, so.
Sure. Rob Costello, the Environmental Resources, with me is our landfill manager, Todd Rocha. So, currently, we have an existing flare at the landfill that burns off various emissions, you know, VOCs, nitrogen oxides, and sulfur oxides. And there's a rule called 4311, which is required to, our flare to meet higher standards. And our current flare does not have that capacity to do that. So, we are required to upgrade that flare to meet the standards of 4311.
Okay. And these standards are obviously being put in place by the state of California?
Correct.
Okay. And the lifespan that I reviewed is 20 years. So, we're essentially, we're paying for this item and it's going to last us 20 years, hopefully?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any ongoing maintenance or what does that look like, Rob?
There definitely is ongoing maintenance and there's times when that flare will be required to be shut down to do those ongoing maintenance. So, that is all part of the operational plan of the landfill.
Okay. And obviously, you understand this a lot better than myself. This captures the odors and anything that's amid, I mean, can you just kind of explain that for me, just a little bit, how it operates?
Sure. We have various gas systems installed throughout the landfill. And the purpose of those, the gas system, is to basically pull all the gases from the landfill, the methanes, the VOCs, the NOCs, and the SOCs, and take it to a centralized location where they're burned off into the atmosphere. location where they're burned off into the atmosphere and under state permit.
Okay, and do you know where that location would be?
That is at the Pink Road landfill. And it's next to our, next to the scale house and our management office.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
You also have one of those flares at the Gear Road, correct?
Correct.
Same thing. Is it this far along in the emissions process or we wait till we get through the useful life?
I think we're pretty good on that one right now.
All right, B5.
Is that, was that a public comment opportunity for that?
Sure, yeah, come on.
What's, I'm sorry, I stepped out, so I just want to make sure that was what was being addressed, the capturing of the gases in the landfill. What Monterey County has done to have a more circular system in their landfill facility is they have a compost facility, it's the landfill, the compost facility, and then they have an anaerobic digester on site where they collect the gases that are being produced by the green composting facility. And the methane that they capture actually gets converted into energy to use in their facility, not to profit off of, but to run their their own systems. And they actually also give some energy or sell some energy to the water treatment plant that's nearby. And I believe Chance, you came out with us, correct me if I'm wrong, but there onsite, there's actually also another, like a recovery facility where people can drop off items that might still be able to exist without going to the landfill, maybe repaired and refurbished and reused all the re's possible before people consider taking them to the landfill. Those are the kinds of systems that we want the county to consider. So instead of capturing the gases and then burning them off and creating more NOCs in our community, because that's what Covanta also did, right? Covanta polluted our air and, which is one of the reasons we got rid of it. So we want to make sure that we use all of the resources that we create back and be able to either put it back into the land to sequester carbon, to be able to reuse materials before we actually try to extract more resources out of the land. So I, I'm not sure, I also missed the public comment period where there was a request to the Air District or the, or California Air Resources Board where this was going to be approved, because you have to get a permit from the district to do this. I don't recall any public comment period or a public announcement of such permit, and that is something I'll take up with with the agency. But I'm sharing that to reiterate that there is a lack of opportunities for community members who care about waste and diverting waste from the landfill to participate in a meaningful conversation, because obviously, waste isn't your forte. This is not where you are experienced. But there are very many experienced community members and organizations that can support our efforts here locally. But what is happening is you're creating silos and having these conversations and creating plans and implementing decisions without community input. And that is a very big frustration. Again, you know, we want the local task force, the Stanislaus County Municipal Waste Local Task Force, to be converted into a Stanislaus County Zero Waste Task Force, where people can come to the table and share resources and information and be better in our practices and our policies and how we deal with our waste. That's all we're asking for. So I wanted to take this opportunity, if we're talking about the landfill and the gases that it produces, we don't want those gases to just be burned off. We don't want you or the county, our representatives, or the Environmental Resources Department to continue to just plan for more waste to come to the landfill. We want a waste, a zero waste plan to prevent those things from coming to the landfill. We want SB 1383 to be strengthened and supported in the smaller rural districts or jurisdictions so that we can keep green waste out of the landfill to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions created at the landfill. And if there are emissions, there's, there are things and practices that we can do to reduce those emissions or use the gases created to be self-sustainable. And that's what we're asking you all to consider. So before you approve all of the things that Rob and Will and the Environmental Resources Department brings to you, we hope that you're also doing your research or that you're asking for support, but that these conversations need to be had in a public space or be allowed to have community input. And when it come to the, to you on the agenda, it's too late. You've already made up your mind. They've already spent millions of dollars with consultants to look at this. And you tell the consultants what to look at, right? Nobody's asking these consultants to look at zero waste practices.
Thank you, Bianca.
Just status quo.
Any other public comment about B1? B1. Okay, going to B5. Tara?
Hi, Tara, good morning.
Good morning.
I recollect that when I first got elected, we approved a similar position, similar to this, for Bonita Pool, and I just wanted to see if that is kind of consistent in what this operator would, their job duties and the different maintenance of Bonita. This is kind of similar to the original item that we approved, I think it was in 2020 or 2021.
Yes, so there's been a couple of different items regarding Bonita Pool and the operations necessary. At the time, the department head had requested the position, but it was not recommended because we had not started the construction of the pool. So this is the same position with the pool operator certification, certification for this project.
Okay, and can you just kind of give a general overview of what their responsibilities will be?
Sure. So the pool operator, once the pool is completed, they'll take the steps necessary to get it into those operational standards, ready for the community use, which right now is estimated to be in late August. The project is due to be completed July 31st and we are on track with our partners at General Services Agency. This includes all the testing, balancing the water circulation, filtration, chemical dosing systems, to me, all the health and safety standards. There's system controllers and pumps, filtration systems, chemical feeders, those all have to be started up and calibrated for the appropriate operation. You also have to carefully monitor the pool to maintain the correct chemical balance, including pH, chlorine levels, and other chemistry, which chemistry was never my good subject in school. That's why we need to hire somebody to do this job.
Okay, wonderful, well, we're all excited for the pool opening, can't wait for July 31st.
Yes, we're very excited as well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any public comment on B5? Not seeing none, I'm going to move to B8.
Okay, B8, so I just had a question regarding this, just specifically for the Keys Community Library, just wanted to see what kind of milestones are being made, are we still on track? Everybody in Keys is very excited for this, Andy, so no pressure.
Yeah, absolutely, these, like Bonita Pool, like all of our library projects, these are community treasures, and if you say it, GSA comes around, and Al Valancia, our assistant director is here, I believe Teresa Vanderveen, our senior construction manager in the audience. And yes, we are on track, we are in the final legs of design, looking at September-ish to bring plans and specifications to the board for approval. The funding sources have generally been agreed to, which I do want to thank the board again for your building community services investment. This is how this project will be funded. The Keys Community Center is roughly 7,500 square feet, it was built in 1968. It was in need of major retrofit anyway. At the same time, we had an opportunity, the library that used to be located at a school district property in a modular building was past its useful life. And so this came about to create great synergy between these two programs. Sarah Dentons here, the librarian, and Alfredo from PAA, the Police Activities League, are already talking about partnership opportunities. And so this is going to be a great thing for the community and it'll also fix all those maintenance structural issues that exist.
Wonderful, thank you so much for that overview, appreciate it.
And I just, I'm going to tag on to that, there is not money, this is going to do the design and Waterford on the footprint, but there's not money to build the library yet, we haven't identified any funding. So I always like to taper down.
Yes, absolutely, Waterford, we're, Sarah and I were kind of giggling this morning, we may get the opportunity to touch every library before, before we're done. And Waterford is a roughly 2,100 square foot building, it's past its useful life, it has an occupancy of 30, it requires regular maintenance. And so we're taking those first steps in putting together those conceptual designs that can be cost estimated, and then we'll work with the chief executive office, the library, the community partners, the city of Waterford, and the board supervisors to come up with a potential plan for consideration.
Thank you, Andy. All right, any public comment on B8? B8, all right, I'll bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve. B1, B5, B8?
If we can take B1 separate, and I do, and we covered C3, yeah, if we could take B1 separate, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, a minute, motion to approve B1.
Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
And one, no. All right.
Motion to approve B5 and B8?
I have a first and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving on. Moving on to our first public hearing, public hearing to consider the adoption of the recommended proposed budget of budget year 2026 and related actions, chief executive officer and team.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and kick us off this morning, and we've got several speakers for you as well. Very pleased to be presenting the 2026 proposed budget for you. So as we present this proposed budget, we do want to acknowledge the obvious uncertainties that are surrounding us at the state and federal level and the decision-making at those levels that could have potential impacts on local government here, particularly counties. Budget and policy choices at those higher levels are always deeply interwoven with the county's ability to provide essential programs and services to the community that we depend upon. And while we do anticipate some shifts in funding for state and federally supported programs at some point in this upcoming fiscal year, the precise impacts and effects of those decisions on the county's general fund and some of our locally managed programs will remain unclear until budgets are passed at state and federal level. I think most of you are probably aware that some counties have already taken more precautionary steps, such as freezing positions and other options. For Stanislaus County, however, our priority remains in maintaining our existing services with minimal adjustments, ensuring stability during what can be an uncertain time. We're fully aware that programs dependent upon state and federal funding are beyond our control and we must be prepared to adapt as needed, providing local matching resources at what we call the minimum mandate level only, and that is consistent with our county general fund contribution policy. We also rely on the county's longstanding no backfill policy regarding federally and state granted programs that would require departments to reassess and reprioritize critical services to best meet community needs, should those programs be eliminated or reduced. Though the general fund itself is not directly at risk, funding shifts may create additional pressures that we acknowledge here on these locally managed services. So despite these uncertainties, we are confident in the recommendations before you today. We have many reasons for confidence. Our fiscal policies and reserves provide a strong foundation that allows us to navigate these challenges prudently. Over the years, we've taken a cautious approach to budgeting and resource allocation, ensuring resilience in times of uncertainty. This 26 proposed budget continues this approach by focusing on our existing services, programs, and staffing currently in place, while making only necessary technical adjustments to optimize our resources. This year ahead will require continued diligence and potentially some tough choices. However, it will remain, we will remain steadfast and work methodically. We can minimize impacts on those service levels within our communities. We continue to proceed with a steady deliberate approach, relying on time-tested policies and practices to address both obstacles and opportunities. These are the strategies and directions that have served this organization well for many decades. With this disciplined strategy and the leadership of our fiscal team and our county department heads, we're very well positioned to move forward with confidence in today's budget recommendations. And it is my pleasure to introduce some of the fiscal strategy team and our department heads that will be joining us today. Today, we will be joined in the presentation from the chief executive office by deputy executive officer Jewel War and senior management consultants Joshua Woolworth, Patrick Kavanaugh, and Jennifer Tosti. And we have department head speakers as well that we like to enjoy inviting to these presentations. And today, we'll be joined by child support services director Baljeet Atwell, environmental resources director Robert Costleby, and our auditor controller, Mandeep Dhill. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the team.
Thank you, Jody. So to get it started, it's helpful to understand why are we here? What is the purpose? Stanislaus County operates on an annual fiscal year that begins on July 1 and ends on June 30. As we conclude the current fiscal year, we also work to prepare for the upcoming fiscal period, beginning with the proposed budget. The 2026 proposed budget establishes the preliminary spending plan for budget year 2026. In addition to serving as good fiscal practice, there are requirements that direct counties on implementation of this initial budget. Government Code Sections 29062 to 29064 require that the recommended budget be submitted to the board of supervisors for consideration and be approved on or before June 30 of each year. This provides board-approved spending authority effective July 1 to ensure continuity in the provision of programs and services to the community. Development of the proposed budget begins with the establishment of a base budget for all departments, representing the funding needed to keep the lights on by supporting existing service levels, as Jody noted earlier. Both general fund and non-general fund departments include updated cost of doing business increases, salary and benefit costs for all allocated positions, and cost allocation plan, or CAP, charge estimates for the full fiscal year. Non-general fund based budgets are aligned with known and available revenue sources, ensuring expenditures are supported by dedicated funding streams. The proposed budget also addresses adjustments to the base budget to meet operational needs and includes support for vehicles, IT equipment, projects, fiscal year-specific elections, and staffing changes. County leadership works to balance support for planned expenditures, which align with board priorities and are guided by policy direction, with the need to preserve resources for the future. The goal is to ensure the sustainability of programs and services that benefit the community while also maintaining long-term financial stability. To better understand the 2026 proposed budget, we'll start our discussion at the 30,000 level foot, or foot level, with a budget overview, and then we'll drill down and get more information as we highlight detailed information from the actual budget document. So starting off, inclusive of the base budget and recommended adjustments, the Stanislaus County 2026 proposed budget totals $1.87 billion and supports 4,915 allocated positions. Recommendations include a total of $66.3 million in adjustments to the base budget. To provide some context, the table on screen depicts the 2026 proposed budget alongside the 2025 adopted budget and the 2026 proposed base budget. The $1.8 billion base budget represents a $49.8 million or 2.7% decrease from the 2025 adopted budget of $1.85 billion, largely attributed to the removal of one-time purchases and project costs, including one, the final fiscal year allocation of building community services investment, or BCSI, funding. Recommended adjustments to the base budget total $66.3 million, funded by $30.6 million in department revenue, the use of $12.8 million in department fund balance, and $23 million in net county cost or general fund contribution. Recommendations do not represent all requested adjustments, however, leaving $7.4 million in department-identified unmet needs not recommended at this cycle. These needs will continue to be monitored and may be addressed at a future budget cycle. Inclusive of recommended adjustments, the 2026 proposed budget totals $1.87 billion, an increase of $16.6 million or 0.9% over the 2025 adopted budget. the 2025 adopted budget. The 2026 proposed budget is funded by $1.35 billion in department revenue, the use of $150.4 million in department fund balance, and $367.5 million in general fund support. To better understand that, financing or balancing the budget requires the use of sufficient funding sources to fully cover expenditures. As we saw on the last slide, the $8.87 billion budget is funded with department revenue and the use of department fund balance, but this also requires $367.5 million in net county cost or county general fund to support and fully balance the budget. The support is provided using $329.9 million in anticipated discretionary revenue, along with the use of $19.8 million in general fund assignments, those reserves set aside for a very specific purpose, and $17.7 million in unassigned fund balance. The largest source of funding used to provide net county cost in the proposed budget comes from discretionary revenue, which is derived from property taxes, sales and use taxes, interest earnings, and a variety of other financing sources. Let's take a look at this critical revenue stream over time. So this chart displays actual discretionary revenue received from fiscal years 2016 through fiscal year 2024, along with projected revenue identified in the 2025 third quarter financial report and the 2026 proposed budget. Actual annual revenue received through fiscal year 2024 averaged 6.5% growth year over year. Projections at third quarter included additional interest earnings from pooled cash, increasing estimates by $11.2 million over that originally projected in the 2025 adopted budget. The 2026 proposed budget includes discretionary revenue estimated at $329.9 million, representing a $19.6 million increase over that identified in the 2025 adopted budget, and $8.4 million over fiscal year 2025 year-end estimates. Interest earnings are expected to remain consistent with the current fiscal year, and tax revenue is projected to grow by about $9.7 million in budget year 2026. Of note, the impacts for fiscal years 2022 and 2023 still appear on our chart, and those are associated with the fair market value of adjustments, investments adjustment, representing the portion of investments purchased with pooled cash, which is allocable to the county general fund and recorded as discretionary revenue. The two orange bars on screen indicate where receipts would have ended without these material adjustments, helping to better portray the slowed revenue growth experienced in recent years. Discretionary revenue is monitored closely throughout the fiscal year and updated as needed. It is one of the critical revenue variables used to project available budget resources for the future in the county's long-range model. This line chart identifies various scenarios for projected fund balance based on the county's long-range model, which provides guidance for financial decisions. On the far left, you can see the $247 million in fund balance available on July 1, 2024, representing what was available at the beginning of fiscal year 2025. From there, four separate lines portray potential fund balances based on various budget utilization. The red line at the bottom of the screen depicts 100% budget utilization, which would result in the depletion of available reserves by July of 2029, indicating a negative fund balance of $59.5 million in July 2030. The blue line immediately above that projects fund balance based on 95% budget utilization, leaving $106.9 million available in July 2030, with the green line at the top ending with $439.9 million based on 85% budget utilization. The dark gray line in the middle represents 91% budget utilization, the one closest to recent experience, which projects $240.1 million would be available in July 2030. The long-range model informs policy decisions through the budget process and provides confidence in the recommendations contained in the 2026 proposed budget. Moving on and drilling down a little bit lower, we'll look at the proposed budget as it rotates to our board priority areas. So you'll see on screen the 2026 proposed budget by board priority area shows that departments supporting a healthy community represent the largest portion of the county's budget at 40.1%. The departments and various operating budgets that make up the priority delivering efficient public services is, makes up about 23.5% of the overall budget, of which $314.8 million or 72% is derived from county operations, which are budgets in support of the overall organization. Departments supporting a strong and safe community represent 21.5% of the budget, and those enhancing community infrastructure make up 11.5%. Departments developing a high-performing economy and promoting lifelong learning make up the remainder of the county budget at 1.9% and 1.5% respectively. I'm going to pass the presentation on over to Joshua at this time, who will share additional priority detail, beginning with the supporting a strong and safe community.
The 2026 proposed budget for departments supporting a strong and safe community totals $401.3 million. This represents an increase of $7.1 million over the base budget. The proposed budget is funded by $133.4 million in department revenue, the use of $19.3 million in fund balance, and $248.6 million in net county cost. Recommendations include the addition of one position for this priority area. The recommended adjustments for departments supporting a strong and safe community include $5.1 million to support the replacement of three vehicles for the district attorney's office, and 51 vehicles for the sheriff's office in alignment with the fleet replacement policy, $795,435 to support the probation department with the replacement of IT equipment and IT license costs consistent with the department's IT replacement plan, and $200,000 to support the purchase of a body scanner for the probation department, which will allow officers to detect items being smuggled into the department's facilities. Additional adjustments totaling $945,861 were made to support adding a new crime analyst to replace a previously contracted crime analyst funded by Community Corrections Partnership funds, support for previously approved AI services to assist probation officers with low-level tasks to free them up to spend more time performing fieldwork, remodeling probation's booking unit at juvenile hall, and to right-size the public defender's justice assistance grant and the sheriff's court security budgets. The 2026 proposed budget for departments supporting a healthy community totals $750.3 million. This represents an increase of $2.7 million over the base budget. The proposed budget is funded by $664.4 million in department revenue, the use of $60.8 million in fund balance, and $25.1 million in net county cost. With the addition of three positions and three transfers out, plus one position that is offset by the deletion of position, there is a net zero impact to the total allocation count for this priority area. The recommended adjustments for departments supporting a healthy community include $2.3 million for BHS to support a $4 million felony incompetent to stand trial penalty, with the balance of the penalty to be paid with CCP funds. $553,323 will be used to support the replacement of vehicles in accordance with fleet replacement policies, to include five vehicles for BHS and five vehicles for HSA, along with one vehicle for Aging and Veteran Services Area Aging Agency on Aging for Title III-B Supportive Services Case Management, using American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA III-B funding, which expires September 30, 2025, to allow staff to complete home visits throughout the county. $455,365 will support three positions added to BHS, including one-time startup costs and internal cost allocations, funded in part with California Department of Social Services, or CDSS, Children's Crisis Continuum Pilot Program grant funding. The positions will support activities such as successful youth placements, community partners engagement, and referrals, tracking, and reporting the grant and grant oversight and compliance. Other adjustments in the priority nets with decrease of $644,285 and include the addition of one manager four in BHS to serve as the department's planned administrator to provide oversight of the department's contract with the California Department of Healthcare Services, or DHCS, and overall management administration supervision and coordination of the specialty mental health services and direct medical organized delivery system programs, offset by the deletion of a manager three position, a transfer of three positions supporting HR from BHS to CEO HR's Department Support Unit, or DSU, as part of the plan to expand the DSU program, and the transfer of a manager two from HSA's administration budget to the clinics and ancillary services budget to right-size the department's allocation with the department's base budget. I would like to now welcome Baljeet Adwal, the Director of Child Support Services, to the podium to share some highlights from the department.
Thank you, Joshua. Good morning, supervisors, CEO, and county council. I'm not going to share anything very new with you today, but my, my hope is to provide a bit of the story behind the graph that you see on the budget presentation for child support services. So the Department of Child Support Services provides services to help parents take care of their financial obligations to their children. We establish parentage, child support orders, and medical support orders. We enforce these orders and distribute payments to the parent who is owed support. As you know, the department is one-third funded by state general fund with a two-thirds, I'm going to say unlimited, federal match. Over the years, the annual allocation of funding has remained relatively flat. I'm going to just say, in brackets, reduced by the impact of inflation naturally. To illustrate our funding situation, in fiscal year 2002, I'm going back a little, '03, our funding hovered around just over $15 million, and the department was allocated 254 positions. Please keep that in mind. For the upcoming fiscal year 2526, our funding allocation equals $16.9 million, and I can barely afford to fill 120 positions. We, we had some wins in 2019, but since 2020, each budget year has brought about a level of uncertainty about our funding. In 2019, as many of you may recall, after much advocacy, we received an augmentation of just over $1 million, with a commitment from the state and feds of another $1 million each year for three consecutive years. Just one year later, as a result of COVID-19 reductions, we were cut 900, just over $933,000. Basically, the $1 million was a wash. The next year, so that was fiscal year 22, bought a reinstatement of $707,000, and then another infusion of $1.1 million the following year. So that was '23, FY23. This new funding brought with it an opportunity and an expectation to hire caseworkers in order to increase the amount we can collect for families. An unpredictable budget, as you know, makes it difficult to plan financially for the long term, because, as you know, you just don't know how much to expect to receive in any given year. And along with the evolving labor market, it has taken time to recruit into the positions that the funding was earmarked for. The latest change to our funding occurred at around this time just last year, when for fiscal year 2425, the local child support agency budget for the entire California LCSAs, local child support agencies, was cut by $17 million, with a local negative effect to us of just over $424,000. This cut at the time was attributed to the state budget deficit at that time. Although for fiscal year 2526, we have been told that there will be neither cuts nor reinstatement, we will know for sure once the final conference committees conclude their work on the state budget in Sacramento. Just a reminder, so even though we were committed $3 million, despite the ups and downs, we are still behind. We are still owed money from that original commitment. So despite the roller coaster budget situation, I just wanted to say the DCSS team continues to provide the best service that we possibly can to the families that we serve, and we still managed to collect over $57 million last year. That's fiscal year 2024. In fact, since '02-'03, we have increased our annual collections amount by approximately $18 million. Due to new legislation and related policies, more of the money we are collecting is being sent directly to families, which is a good thing. Additional changes are also occurring to make the program more accessible, and soon we will be implementing what we call the Child Support Final Federal Rule, which aims to further modernize the program. And in July, at the Child Support Awareness Month presentation before the board, we will elaborate more on those changes, go into more detail on the changes that the program is undergoing and that the, about the new partnerships we are forming. And lastly, I ask that you mark your calendars for our seventh annual Kids Connect event, where we and our partners provide information on many, many county resources, and where we give away hundreds of back facts to students. It'll be taking place on July 26, 10:00 AM, at Modesto Junior College, 435 College Avenue. If you cannot join us, please consider donating a backpack or funds for a backpack so no child who visits on the day misses out. More information can be found at our website, stancoDCss.org, or on our Stan DCSS Facebook page. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Baljeet?
I don't know that it's a question, but I definitely have a comment. And when we were meeting and we talked about this influx of money and uncertainty, you kind of touched on it. But I don't know that the public understands, because the first reaction is, you got a million dollars, hire three or four people, and it'll last three years or more or less. And then you start the recruitment process and you realize they cut next year's budget by half a million dollars. And so you've been caught in the cycle really since even COVID, because the money exploded during COVID, even for the Board of Supervisors or for the county budget. And, and it puts you in a horrible position, and we've talked about that, because you don't want to recruit someone, keep them in the job for a year, and then have to release them for a couple of years. You know, you want some sustainable funding. Even if you knew it was declining, you could prepare for that. And so generally, you know, if a smart person would put all that money into your, your fund balance so that you can continue your operation without the degradation that's probably coming in the future.
Exactly.
So I, I so much appreciate you. Again, I do department head visits. I learned so much. And I think someone had said it earlier, it was Bianca, we're not experts up here. The best we can do is, you know, I'm not even a good farmer at this point. So just learning from the department heads, gaining expertise, and you're always enlightening in what you convey to me.
Thank you.
Baljeet, I always say this, and it's, the work you do is so important to this community. And, and it's such a small budget that you, that you have to deal with to make this thing happen. And the return on our investment, we've always talked about, is great, what you do with that. You know, and I always want to bring this up. It's not only about collecting from deadbeat dads, deadbeat moms, whatever the case may be, but, but the work that you guys do towards, you know, reuniting parents with their kids, not just getting dollars from them, but try to get them back involved in their life. And you're dealing with the most vulnerable in our community. Basically, these kids, you know, chances are, coming from these broken homes, the situations that they're in, are going to end up in our system, all a part of our system, you know, throughout their first 18 years of their life, probably. And the work that you guys do is to try to keep them out of our system, and to help them grow up and have a happy life, a successful life. And so frustrating, you know, we always talk about funding, and for every action, there's a reaction here. And, and we have people that want certain funding in certain areas, but realize that that's taking it from other areas. And so our job up here is a balancing act to try to make things work. And, and I'm always upset, disappointed that we can't in that balancing act get more money to you for what you're doing, but very much appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you. And we share that with the state. We've shared it with the funders, like, we would like, we, being the child support directors across the state, shared it with feds, just that we would like some stability. If we were able to at least hold on to the funds for more than a year, because we can only spend within that year, that would help with the budget situation. In the meantime, we just, as you said, we budget conservatively, can't provide all the service we would, services that we would like to and touch every case on our caseload to be able to locate more parents so we could get more funding to those kids. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Baljeet.
Hi, good morning. I will be presenting the next few board priorities, starting with developing a high-performing economy. The 2026 proposed budget for departments developing a high-performing economy totals $35.7 million. This represents an increase This represents an increase of $185,000 over the base budget. The proposed budget is funded by $31.4 million in department revenue, the use of $5,000 in department fund balance, and $4.4 million in net county costs. There are no changes to the allocated positions for this priority area. The increase of $185,000 over base budget is funded with net county costs and will be used to support the Agricultural Commissioner and replacing four vehicles used for the agricultural and weights and measures inspections countywide. Next up, the 2026 proposed budget for departments promoting lifelong learning totals $27 million, and there's no change to base budget. The proposed budget is funded by $21.6 million in department revenue, $4.6 million in department fund balance, and $866,810 in net county costs. Additionally, there are no changes to the allocated positions for this priority area. The 2026 proposed budget for departments enhancing community infrastructure totals $215.4 million. This represents an increase of $2.2 million over base. It's, the budget is funded by $152 million in department revenue, $51.5 million in department fund balance and retained earnings, and $11.9 million in net county costs. There are no change to the position allocations for this priority area. Kind of diving into the specifics on this one, the recommended adjustments for departments enhancing community infrastructure include $1.2 million for, to purchase new and replacement vehicles for Departments of Environmental Resources, Parks and Recreation, and Planning and Community Development. For Environmental Resources, which operates the Fink Road Landfill, they will be adding two new trucks. One truck is for a landfill lead worker position that was added during this current 2025 fiscal year, and one truck will be used to transport equipment. The Fink Road Landfill also plans to replace a service truck used to repair equipment on-site. These vehicle additions and the replacement vehicle will enhance the landfill operations through operational efficiencies. In addition, Parks and Recreation will be replacing four vehicles, and Planning will be replacing, excuse me, will be replacing one vehicle used by its building permit staff. In Parks and Recreation, an $850,000 adjustment is recommended to rebudget State of California per capita grant funding. This grant funding will be used for park improvement projects, along with project management oversight. A $76,000 adjustment will purchase new trailers for landfill operations. This includes a new low-profile gooseneck trailer that, when paired with the new truck previously mentioned, will transport Fink Road landfill equipment and vehicles to and from Gear Road Landfill, Morgan Shop, and the General Services Agency Fleet Services. The second trailer will be a gooseneck roll-off trailer with four bins, which will be used to support waste management and cleanup efforts and seasonal operations at the Gear Road Landfill. And finally, a $33,500 increase in planning and community development will fund costs related to the county's municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4, permit. And at this time, I would like to welcome Robert Coslivy, the Director of Environmental Resources, to the podium to share some highlights on DER.
Good morning, Chairman Condon, Honorable Board, CEO Hayes, and Counsel Bowes. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight some of our programs for the Department of Environmental Resources, or DER. Over the past year, DER has been hard at work rolling up its sleeves across all divisions to take a fresh strategic look at the programs we deliver to the public. Now, from code enforcement to solid waste to hazmat to groundwater, we've been focused on strengthening our services, improving our internal coordination, and positioning the department to meet the growing needs of Stanislaus County. One of the programs receiving a major refresh is our Code Enforcement Division. With strong support from the Board of Supervisors and the CEO's office, we've been working on a thoughtful and comprehensive revamp. The goal is to increase clarity, consistency, and responsiveness while ensuring we're not just enforcing standards, but also supporting well-maintained livable neighborhoods throughout the county. Meanwhile, in our solid waste and landfill divisions, we've been navigating a major operational shift. In December of '24, Covanta, or ReWorld, also known as the Waste-to-Energy Facility, permanently shut down. For years, this facility played a vital role in reducing landfill volumes by up to 90%, helping to preserve valuable airspace and to project landfill capacity well into the 2050s. And I asked AI to give me a good visual example of what 90% reduction would look like for solid waste. And the one that stuck out to me was a professional football stadium. So, if you fill that football stadium completely up to the very top, that's 100%. If you reduce the volume down by 90%, it would only cover the end zone. That's a huge difference, and keep that in mind as we move on. With the facility now closed, 100% of that waste is going directly to the landfill. And updated projections show we could reach capacity between 2039 and 2042. In response, we're actively reevaluating our waste streams, enhancing diversion strategies, and laying the groundwork to expand landfill capacity in a smart, sustainable way. Just as importantly, we've begun to outreach to the community to explore zero-waste principles and how they can be incorporated into our long-term planning. It's a collaborative process, and one we're approaching with both urgency and optimism. Our landfill manager recently reached out to VIP to have an onsite meeting over at the landfill, so we can show what the waste looks like from the end side. And this Thursday, VIP, along with some community leaders, are going to be in attendance, and once we have that process, it's going to open up conversations for that zero-waste moving In our hazardous material division, we were thrilled to share some exciting recognition earlier this year. Stanislaus County was awarded the Secretary Award for Environmental Achievement by CalEPA, presented at the California Coupa Conference in Los Angeles. This prestigious honor highlights the dedication and professionalism of our Coupa team, whose commitment to public health, environmental protection, and strong collaboration with the regulated community has truly set them apart. I know some of you on the Board or out here in the public have interacted with our hazmat team, whether it's in the business setting or at our house with hazardous waste. These folks absolutely rock, and they've delivered amazing customer service. Our environmental focus extends to work under Sigma, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Even though I would like to get into the nitty-gritty with Sigma, a couple of minutes today wouldn't suffice. However, the takeaway message for Sigma is that we continue moving forward toward a long-term compliance with this mandated state regulation, we're taking an integrated approach. In fact, that approach aligns with our other programs at DER, some mentioned today. We don't view them as separate issues, they're part of a single interconnected strategy. And as always, we're involving our stakeholders before any major decisions are made, ensuring transparency, collaboration, and sound planning. Later today, we'll revisit these efforts when we bring forward a proposed adjustment to landfill fees, a key step to ensuring that we have the resources to maintain critical infrastructure, support innovations, and responsibly manage for future growth. It's been a year of momentum, recognition, and strategic planning, one that's laid a strong foundation for work still ahead, and we continue building resilient forward, looking at for Stanislaus County. Do I have any questions?
Any questions for Rob?
No questions, just want to thank you, Rob, for all you're doing, the same thing, especially with the water stuff, what we're in the middle of right now, and the struggles we have within our own community of East First is West, and what's happening there with who's a user and who's not, and that fight. And it really takes someone with some balance and some, and extreme knowledge of the subject matter, and you have that. And I very much appreciate having you in this position and all the work you're doing. So, thank you, Rob.
Okay, I'm Jennifer Tosti, I'll walk us through the next couple of sections. The 2026 proposed budget for departments delivering efficient public services totals $439.7 million, which is an increase of $54.2 million over the base budget. The proposed budget is funded with $318.6 million in department revenue, the use of $14.2 million in fund balance, and $107 million in net county costs. There are three positions being transferred into this priority area. Recommended adjustments for departments delivering efficient public services will include $33.9 million for rebudgeted backbone infrastructure projects at the Crow's Landing Industrial Business Park due to extended timelines, an increase of $12.2 million in appropriations for contingencies to help the county prepare for unexpected costs or emergencies that may come up later in the year and aren't included in the regular budget, $3.4 million to support the 2026 primary election, and other adjustments totaling $4.7 million to support various departments. These include replacing three motor pool vehicles for the General Services Agency, replacing outdated computer equipment for the treasure tax collector department, and the transfer of three positions from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to the Department Support Unit in CEO Human Relations. At this time, I would like to welcome the county's Auditor Controller, Mandy Dillon, to the podium to share some department highlights.
Did everyone see Terry sit up and pay attention all of a sudden?
Here comes the CPA, all right.
Even breathed into the mic real loud.
Good morning, Chair Condon, Board of Supervisors, CEO Hayes, County Counsel Bowes, county staff, and members of the public. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the accomplishments of the Auditor Controls Office, my first one. So, our department's mission is simple, yet significant. We build community by safeguarding public resources through effective fiscal oversight. We do this by applying good accounting policies, internal controls, legal requirements, and professional standards, all in service to the residents of Stanislaus County. Among our core responsibilities are processing bi-weekly payroll for over 4,700 county employees, issuing vendor payments for county services and supplies, distributing property tax to more than 250 local agencies, and preparing the county's audited financial statements and reports. We also manage the county's cost allocation plan, conduct purchasing card audits, and ensure compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, including the implementations of new standards. So, almost the $1.9 billion budget that we're considering today in the next fiscal year, we have to accurately account for the revenues and expenditures and the fund balances and the very many different funds we keep. So, a big responsibility there, to track all the actuals. Our fiscal, for the Auditor Controller, our fiscal year '26 proposed budget is $7.1 million, and we currently have 43 full-time allocated positions. We have maintained the staffing level for the last couple of years. So, before diving into this year's accomplishments, I want to recognize our Assistant Auditor Controller, Chris Barnes, and the rest of our leadership team, many of whom are here today with us. While most of us are relatively new in our positions, less than only again, we've been running a strong race, even if I admit there have been a few moments when I nearly dropped the baton, you know, the baton over there in the picture. On some days, our work feels like a scene from the action thriller, The Accountant, you know, this is action. And yes, we actually do have accountant position in our office and county departments, and let me tell you, they're just as capable as the movie version, no less than Ben Affleck in the movie, I tell you that. One of my top priorities since taking office has been completing several required audits. The independent audit of the county's fiscal year '23 annual comprehensive financial report and single audit for federal funding compliance was completed last year in November. The audit for fiscal year '24 is in its final stages. We received the draft report last week and expect final reports by the end of the month. I'm pleased to say, therefore, the draft report, we've received a clean, unmodified opinion from the independent auditor confirming that the county's financial statements are presently, presented fairly in all material respects. So, Mr. Speaker, the state or county's financial position records is strong.
All right.
It felt good, I always wanted to say that.
We have to applaud.
In addition, fieldwork for the fiscal year '22 and '23 purchasing card audits has been completed, and with draft reports in hand, final reports will be issued by the end of this month and will be shared with departments and the Board soon after. The fiscal year '24 purchasing card audit will be completed by December 31, '25, by the end of this calendar year. Our team also delivered on several special projects during this fiscal year. These include successfully launching the new purchasing card program, the One Card, in partnership with JP Morgan Chase Bank. So far, about half of county departments have transitioned to the new card. Also, implementing the Oracle Cloud Cash Management Module to improve tracking and reconciliation of issued checks for the county, schools, and special districts. Supporting the issuance of several new voter-approved school bonds, bringing the total to around 94 active bonds right now. Our team helps validate the borrowing capacity, manage apportionment, and distribute property tax funds across multiple custodial accounts for the scheduled bond payments. As well, we developed a new written exam for account 1, 2, 3 recruitments to better assess the skills needed for success in these positions. Also, collaborating with COHR and PeopleSoft Tech Team to launch the Work Number System, which automates employment and income verification for current and former employees. So, looking forward, we remain focused on using technology to be more efficient while maintaining the accuracy of our financial operations. This includes providing ongoing training for our Oracle Cloud system, implementing direct deposit automation for employee expense reimbursement, upgrading our lease accounting tools, and using a new cost plan software to better support county departments. Upcoming initiatives also include updating the county's travel policy and expanding the One Card program to all departments by the end of this calendar year. So, in closing, we remain committed to delivering accurate, timely, and transparent financial services by building strong relationship, winning trust, and supporting the vital work of our county departments. I believe fiscal integrity and transparency are shared responsibilities, and I want to thank this Board, the Board, CEO, CEO Leadership Team, Department Heads, county-wide fiscal teams, and our own department leadership team and staff for their ongoing partnership and support. The Auditor Controls Office is proud to serve the residents of Stanislaus County with professional standards, the highest professional standards, accountability, and a focus on continuous improvement. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much this morning.
Thank you, Mandy. Go ahead, Chancellor.
Just a quick question, Mr. Dillon, his point of clarification regarding those audits. Were those audits specific to the departments? Were they an internal audit done?
The comprehensive one? Yeah, those are the county-wide, counties- Yeah, those are the county-wide, county's total financial picture audit that's required to done, to be done annually for each fiscal year. So yeah, that's the, the report, the formal report will be presented to the board once we have the final report. Yeah, but that's, that's the big one, yes.
Okay. And obviously, so the internal audit conducted by your office of each department that will be handed over to us once finalized?
Yeah, on the purchasing card ones, yeah. It's actually done by external independent auditor. But yeah, the plan is to bring it before this board and also share it with the departments once we receive the final reports.
Do we have an estimate on when that will be?
I, I'm thinking by the end of this month, we're gonna get all the formal final reports, so just putting it on the agenda, so I would say mid of August, roughly.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions, just kind of all kidding aside, Mandy, you walked into a situation with a lot going on in that department, and you've grabbed it and taken hold of it and done just a great job. And as we always say, we sit up here and make decisions based on the information that you guys provide to the CEO's office, and, and without good numbers from you, this county's a mess. And so, and that's not the case. Everything that you guys are doing is great. I very much appreciate you and all of your staff for what you guys do. I know, I'd love to see us still kind of pursue outsourcing the payroll. I know I bring that up a lot, but I know there's a lot of the staff come in on weekends probably sometimes to have to process that payroll, and how much of our staff that would free up to do other things would be great. So I know you're gonna, hopefully one day you're gonna get us back a report here.
Yeah.
One more thing to add to your list, I'm sorry. But anyway, thank you for all you're doing, great work.
Thank you, Terry.
All of you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mandy. The 2025 third quarter financial report included four thousand nine hundred and ten allocated positions. One additional position has been approved effective July 1st, 2025 through separate board action on December 10th, 2024. This adjustment results in an allocation count of four thousand nine hundred and eleven. The 2026 proposed budget includes recommendations to add a net of four positions, and if approved as recommended, will support four thousand nine hundred and fifteen positions in total. Please note, this doesn't to- this total doesn't include any changes that might result from separate actions on today's board agenda. The proposed budget includes a recommendation to add one position for departments supporting a strong and safe community. Specifically, one crime analyst in probation to analyze crime trends for the day reporting center, ensuring compliance with federal data reporting requirements. This position places support, this position replaces support previously provided through contracted services funded by CCP. For Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, the addition of four positions is offset by the deletion of one vacant position and the transfer of three positions to another department. Changes include adding one Staff Services Coordinator, one Staff Services Analyst, and one block-budgeted Behavioral Health Specialist 1-2 to support the Children's Crisis Continuum Pilot Program Grant, adding one Manager 4 to serve as Behavioral Health Plan Administrator, and this position is offset by the recommenda- recommended deletion of one vacant block-budgeted Manager 1-2-3 position, and transferring three positions from BHRS to the CEO Human Relations Department Support Unit. For CEO Human Relations, there will be three positions transferred from BHRS as previously So this chart illustrates the number of full-time allocated positions noted with the blue line at the top, and the number of full-time employees noted with the green line below. The new allocation count of four thousand nine hundred and fifteen positions surpasses the previous high of four thousand six hundred and three positions recorded in the 2008 adopted budget. This represents an increase of three hundred and twelve positions, approximately seven percent increase since the previous peak. The continuing growth in staffing levels is primarily due to mandated programs and the increased need to provide services to the community. You can also see, since the economic downturn, the vacancy rate has incrementally increased over time. The county's employee recruitment and retention strategy was approved on August 16th, 2022, and included an immediate five percent base wage increase and implementation of Employee Choice Bonus Plan to ensure the county's ability to recruit the best qualified candidates to fill vacant positions and to retain existing employees who hold valuable knowledge and experience that contribute to the success of the county organization. This strategy is having a positive effect, as seen in the uptick of filled positions since implementation, reducing the vacancy rate from a high of sixteen point nine percent in July 2022 to twelve point nine percent as of May 1st, 2025. The recommended 2026 proposed budget net increase of four positions brings the total allocation count to four thousand nine hundred and fifteen positions. This increase shows the continuing growth in staffing levels needed to provide quality programs and services to the community. And now I'll pass the presentation back over to Jewel War to take a look at what's on the horizon.
Thank you, Jen. So as we move into Budget Year 2026, staff will continue to monitor various external factors for potential local impacts. Concurrent with our proposed budget process, the state is finalizing its budget and federal directives are evolving. Staff are tracking closely on these movements to determine whether there will be changes that require adjustments locally. Staff will also continue to monitor discretionary revenue receipts, updating projections accordingly, and identify any savings realized through fiscal year 2025 year-end close. Combined, this information will help guide policy decisions for the 2026 adopted budget, the primary budget for the fiscal year from which annual comparisons are drawn. The adopted budget is followed by quarterly updates that analyze and explain trend data and incorporate necessary budget adjustments to ensure continuous service to the community. Performance vision is ongoing throughout each fiscal year, operating under a two-year plan and serving as a natural complement to the annual budget process. In summary, the proposed budget establishes the preliminary budget for Budget Year 2026. Focused on maintaining existing service levels and providing for critical operational needs, it paves the way for informed adjustments at adopted budget. The 2026 adopted budget will be presented to the Board of Supervisors in September. Adjustments at that time will focus on incorporating updated information, including external funding allocations, and may provide departments the opportunity to address additional staffing and equipment needs for the year. All requests will be evaluated against available funding and ongoing operational needs, again seeking that balance between needs of today and sustainability into the future. For more details on the 2026 proposed budget, you can find the electronic document online at stancounty.com/budget. Alternately, you can go to the county's main page at stancounty.com and scroll towards the bottom of the screen, and you'll see the piggy bank that says Financial Transparency. If you click on that, you will find the 2026 proposed budget as well as budgets from prior fiscal periods. We have a total of six staff recommendations before you this morning. One, accept the recommended proposed budget for Budget Year 2026 from the Chief Executive Officer. Two, conduct a scheduled public hearing to receive public comment and input on the proposed budget for Budget Year 2026. Three, direct and approve any changes the Board of Supervisors chooses to make and then adopt the 2026 proposed budget. Four, authorize the Chief Executive Officer and Auditor Controller to make any necessary technical adjustments required in order to implement the approved proposed budget. Five, and then the salary and position allocation resolution to reflect the recommended changes for the 2026 proposed budget as outlined in the Staffing Impact section of the report and detailed in Attachment 2 to the Agenda item, to become effective at the start of the first full pay period on or after July 12, 2025, unless otherwise noted. And finally, direct the Chief Executive Officer to prepare the recommended 2026 adopted budget for budget period ending on June 30, 2025, and set the public hearing for consideration of the adopted budget on September 30, 2025. And that concludes our presentation of the 2026 proposed budget. County staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Comments? Yeah.
I just have a couple of comments, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
As we kind of enter into the final budget, I would like to see a data breakdown of the ratios comparing managers and supervisors of each department to line staff. For the sake of government efficiency, I believe that this is a benchmark, and is important to highlight this efficient balance between the ratio of managers as compared to line staff, and that way that we can identify any disparities, making sure that our departments are running efficiently and effectively to the better benefit of our county. So if we can kind of just prepare that as we go into final, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do have one comment card, Stephen Morrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bowes. First, as a public service, the movie The Account is available for streaming on Prime Video. Okay. Looking at the budget, we know budgeting is a very, very difficult procedure. You could increase the appropriations by a billion dollars and still not cover all of the county needs, so this is a tremendous budgeting balance, and the uncertainty in Washington DC and Sacramento does not make that any easier. But I will have two tables that I'm gonna look at that were in the, the budget, the complete item that was posted online. On page six of twelve, it shows the total recommended appropriations versus estimated revenue. Appropriations of one point, one point eight seven, and revenue of one point six one. Now, that means we have to reach into our one-time fundings for a total of a hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. That's approximately 10% of the budget. Now, knowing that you folks went through a far more detailed briefing than what we got here today, if you gentlemen are comfortable with that, I can live with that decision. But it is a little bit troubling that we're still continuing to operate at a deficit. Then the second thing, we're gonna go to page nine of the formal budget document, and that lists the summary of fund balance. And I kind of bring this up every year because to me, it's, to me, it's a concern. We're starting with a projected fund balance for total of approximately five hundred ninety-three million, and at the end of the fiscal year, we're gonna look at a fund balance of about four hundred and five million. That means this year, you're planning to spend thirty-one point six six of that fund balance to help cover the various things in the budget. Now, we know that the county is not supposed to be a banker and hold on to money, the public's money, but at some point, we kind of need to look at that and look at how much money, or how much do you want to retain into that fund, and not dive too deeply into it just because of uncertainty. Because the supervisor case reminded me, when the big budget crisis hit in 2008 and 2009, things were pretty ugly and there were a lot of cuts, but there was a hundred million in the reserve budget at that time, otherwise it would have been a heck of a lot worse. So I just wanted to point out that we need to start thinking, what is your floor? I know we got, I got a figure from Mr. Graywall of approximately two hundred million the last time this came up, but I think it's something that needs to be discussed, is what's the floor in the fund balance that you really don't want to go underneath? And again, exacerbated by the current uncertainty in Washington and Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. That's the only comment card I have on this item. Anyone else would like to make public comment?
Thank you. I know there's a lot of details missing in this overall presentation, and so, but I wanted to make some recommendations on what we, as community members, would like to see in, included in this budget. I'd like to see where the money is going for those three to four million dollars that we got from the closure of the incinerator, and how we're actually using them for a zero-waste plan, and how we're going to keep things out of the landfill. I'd like to also see, we discussed equitable participatory abilities. Translation and interpretation policy that was passed last year, I believe, was not adequate, nor was it equitable. I don't think it can actually count, asking people to Google Translate documents is not complying with law. And so we'd like to see funding actually implemented so that we can interpret and translate those critical documents, which we haven't had an actual conversation about what the county and what the community agree on, what are critical documents that need to be translated? And if we're working out this budget, I'd like to see an attempt to find the resources so that we can create an inclusive community and deliver efficient public services. And lastly, I believe there is money in this budget to implement a civilian review board with an auditor. You have an auditor for your budget, and that's basically what the auditor for the civilian review board would be doing, is reviewing your policies and practices and complaints and making the police department more efficient. Some examples of efficiency within the police department is taking away some of their money so that we can use those funds for adequate public services led by community members and not by officers with a badge or a, a uniform delivering services. So I, I'd like to see those included in the budget. More details of how this money is going to be spent might be coming soon, but those are our three recommendations to see in this budget. A civilian review board with an independent auditor, adequate and equitable translation, interpretation, and funding and resources of the closure of Covanta and Zero Waste Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Any other comments on this agenda? Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Again, I'm Carla. I think I just have one comment with the proposed budget, and it has to do with the staffing. I did see, like, for the behavioral, I don't know if you guys hire an outside agency to deliver behavioral or social services. It is a little bit worrisome, given that there was zero, like, staff incidents, and I know, like, a person earlier said, like, we have to find a floor in, like, the spending. But again, I do see that you guys are making money and, like, allocations for that one probation officer, and I understand, like, hey, we have problems, police officers need to, like, probation officers need to, like, deal with this, but I feel like we're gonna keep having more problems if there's no services allocated for behavioral or social or mental health issues here in Modesto, especially given that we are having, like, an increase in houseless folks. A lot of them, again, don't, have a lot of access to these services, and I feel like at St. Louis County, we can find a way for that, so if you guys could go ahead and, you know, I, I, again, I'm new to this, but hopefully you guys could see, like, that mental health issues, social services are a big need in this community, and hopefully you guys have money to allocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Any other comments? Come on up.
Good morning, Board. At this time, I'd like to share some facts with you all. I promise it is germane to this agenda item if you'll indulge me just a bit here. A dataset trained for a Microsoft chatbot being used, used, misused such that it spread racist tweets, an Amazon AI-enabled recruitment tool that only recommended men, a Zillow and AI tool that led to inefficient purchases resulting in the layoff of two thousand Zillow employees, Dutch Parliament, and including their Prime Minister, resigning after investigation finding the proceeding, heating eight years, more than two thousand, sorry, twenty thousand families were defrauded due to a discriminatory AI algorithm. With Boeing, an automated system that made more aggressive and riskier maneuvers, hers that led to, who, a reduction in safety measures resulting in a crash leading to the deaths of more than three hundred people cumulatively. We're still in the early days of artificial intelligence, and I've already spoken today in this chamber about the lack of trust between community members and the Sheriff's Department. Seeing the proposal to ease some of the costs associated with administrative tasks for sheriff's deputies by using AI, hey, to me, is a rather foolish endeavor. If that lack of trust between human to human is already so present in our community, who's gonna trust a computer? Even the- Even the most prolific data scientists, the most astounding computer scientists will struggle to tell you exactly how an AI comes up with some of the things it generates, those large language learning models, that machine learning. It's not accountable to the public. But it does lead to some very costly problems, costly both in terms of dollars and sometimes even in human lives. Does the county really want to absorb the risk of an AI problem down the road? It might seem like a short-term cost-saving measure now. I can't see the feasibility of that, and I'm an educator in our community. I teach economics. I've thought this through rather thoroughly. I just don't see that as an effective way to ease that financial burden. The administrative tasks, as rote and monotonous as they may be, should really be handled by a human. At this time, I don't feel there's confidence in the artificial intelligence to make the sound judgment. And frankly, at this time, I don't feel the sheriff's department has earned our trust. They certainly shouldn't earn our dollars. Why would we outsource that to a computer that we trust even less? That money should be put towards things that will actually have a benefit in the community. That's the civilian police review board, that's an independent auditor, that's housing, that's environmental justice, things that have been proven not just to have social benefits, but long-term economic benefits in the community. Dollars you invest into housing and mental health are paid back to you in the future. Dollars you put into AI are opening up the county to lawsuits when problems inevitably arise. It's a matter of when, not a matter of if those problems come up, if we are relying on an AI to handle these sensitive issues. And frankly, if there's an administrative report, I don't know about everyone else in this chamber, but I wouldn't feel comfortable on the data security side of that. It's too easy for there to be problems. We put that much trust in an unaccountable computer program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Come on up.
Hello. Speaking again from CB BIPOC to agree with what my comrades were saying as well, kind of like how y'all did have an auditor here to review everything to, like recently in this case. I also agree that there's, you know, money in the budget, just like for our civilian review board that we do have from Modesto, we have an independent auditor to really review policies and stuff like that. And I recommend we have money for that, for a civilian review board, for the San Andreas County sheriffs. But one thing that I also kind of support is an increase in services for our residents and our people, because a common thing that we are seeing, such as in the Powell's, where it's like a lot of these services are being taken over by police, which in this case, I don't think is a great move because it's let them do their jobs, that they, you know, are, you know, trained for, while why don't we have the money if we have so to fund services for professionals that have the skills and training to, for behavioral health or public services, or even supporting kids, you know, and community, you know, programs and stuff like that. And also, yeah, I really don't agree with using AI or any analytics, because yeah, it's too new, and there have been problems across the board in multiple, what do you call it, institutions. And a common marketing technique for AI and analytics is they tend to market themselves and their services as using tools to kind of combat or kind of move away from the empathy and humanizing elements that supposedly get in the way. It's been done so in social media aspects, in housing, that has led to more folks basically getting evicted, in healthcare, where you have, you know, what had happened recently with like United Health. And hence, let's keep those humanizing elements and that empathy and let people do that work, because I think that's much safer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on this agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Any board member have comments? Also entertain a motion.
I'll just have a few comments to Jennifer Joshua. We got JJJ. I didn't even think about it. I so much appreciate, and Terry had already talked about, the information that we gather to make decisions comes through people much smarter than us, but it allows us to make informed decisions as representatives of the people. What I've noticed in this year's budget, and you know, I feel better about this year's budget than I did the previous ones because I kind of see things leveling off, and so we have a pretty good grip, because you're always saying this, up and down. The uncertainty is created through the state and the federal government currently. But most of that money, we have a no-backfill policy, so we don't support it with discretionary spending other than our mandate, minimum mandated funding. So it's typically our discretionary spending that I'm more concerned about because that's what allows us to create a reserve of what you talked about, Steve. The components of the, when we look at everything, this year, we had a surprise with interest rates, which is bad because interest rates were supposed to come down. Instead, interest rates have stayed up, so it was beyond our expectation. So that's really going to help us out in this budget. And also, the vacancy rate is how we've survived over the last probably five or six years. You look at 2007, there was that graphic you put up. 2007, we had, I think it was like 40, 4,100 positions filled. If I did my math right, the 4,603 at 88% of that versus today, the 13% vacancy rate at 4,905. We've only grown 200 positions, and that's 2007, so it's 18 years. We've grown 200 positions in this organization, although the top-line number looks like it's grown more than that. That's not the case. And you take that into account, and we've been able to provide more services to more of the population, so that's come through efficiency. And at some point, the efficiency gets smaller and smaller and smaller because we're asking people to do more with less, and it probably comes back to, I know the question that Supervisor Condit had asked about upper management versus lower management. You know, management is there to keep people on track, but there's a lot of employees who are just doing work, right? Forward-facing, presenting services to people, whether it's a mental health clinician, whether it's someone at a window handing out SNAP benefits or signing people up for SNAP benefits. So we're always trying to find balance because liability comes, you notice in the sheriff's department, the sergeants typically are the ones that are trying to keep deputies, new deputies, train them up and keep our liability down. And so you want to have management to some degree. What I've noticed in the incomes on the discretionary spending side, property taxes continue to show growth, and probably not as much growth, but sales tax had dropped. And I always look at, I use major L as my indication, although we're a county, we're not countywide, you know, the cities also have theirs. But 2017, sales tax revenue county-wide is $43 million, and it peaked in 2021 at $62 million. You add on top of that Prop 172, which is the public safety tax, and we received a disproportionate share, so we saw ours really spike up. And we're down to, last year, the full year was down to $60 million from $62 million, and we're tracking behind that currently in this current year. So essentially, we're seeing a decline, a slow decline in sales tax right now. Not, again, not much of a difference, I would say flat. And so we know where we are on the discretionary side. I feel secure with where we are. And so when I see this budget, we can only spend 90.5%, and you can pull that one back up too, because I think it's 91%. It shows us going into our reserves. And Steve and I worry, just like you, every single day, and we have internal arguments. We have, as long as I've been on this board, about how much in reserves is a adequate reserve. Supervisor Graywall said 200 million, I would tell you the number's higher than that for me, just having been through 2008 or 9, 10, 11, and 12. But suffice it to say, it's somewhere in that range. Every year, we present a budget that shows us going into reserves because we're expecting 100% allocation. And if you look at that 100% allocation, we wouldn't survive very long, just based on the vacancy rate. We've been hitting around 91% more or less, and so that's what we put in our budget with the best information available. Again, I feel really, really good about this budget, where we are in this budget, and I'm talking about trying to keep us healthy, like financially healthy. We all have areas we'd like to see more spending in. We put $20 million towards the libraries and towards parks, which we think were, you know, became high on our list. We talk about allowing opportunities out in the community, and that money is running out, so we have to look at other things. We continue to prioritize through the budget process, through the department heads who come forward with position allocations. You can see that it's a very austere budget when you look at the position allocations. I know we don't usually add a ton of positions right now, but I think it does send a message. Again, shout out to the department heads who, you know, are not asking for tons of positions either, that put the CEO's office in a tough position in a, what I would consider, a flat budget. I'm very proud, Jewel, I know you've been, the last couple of times you've been presenting, you're doing a great job leading the budget team on our way through. And Patrice, who's behind the scenes, she's kind of like the Wizard of Oz behind the, you know, making things work. But it is, I feel good. And normally, I'm the one in here, you know, crying, you know, about where we're headed, but I feel secure in this budget, and I haven't felt secure in a budget in three or four years. So going forward, I appreciate, oh, and Patrick, I forgot you, hiding behind the thing. But I appreciate the budget team, and we'll continue to look into all the things that everyone considers a priority in the community.
Thank you, Vito. Any other comments?
Okay, I'll go. Vito hit most of it. That was perfect. So first, just thank, you know, thank everybody, Jewel, Joshua, Patrick, Jennifer, Valjeet, Rob, and Mandeeb. Thank you all, guys, for your presentations and the good work everybody's doing. Just a couple of things. This is great. The way we do things here, just as always, I'm always impressed, how we, you know, we start off with our proposed, and then we wait until we get our final numbers to get our adopted final, because we wait for the final numbers from last year before we move forward and really kind of finalize things here. And you can't, I mean, you can do all kinds of budget in the world, but you got to have the actual numbers to see what actually happened last year, and we base everything on that for the coming year. Our lot is based on that. So just a great approach, the way we look at things here. I like to get into a little bit more, I'm always into the technical and the weeds and that kind of stuff, but when I come here, I always like, I do that every day at my job, but I like to kind of get more philosophical here when I come here and we talk about these budgets. You know, like I said before earlier, for every action, there's a reaction, and we as a board, our staff, you know, our CEO's staff, all our department heads, you know, we ultimately, our department heads not necessarily, but at the CEO's level and at the board level here, we really have to look at things globally. You know, we're looking at the big picture here, and what we end up having to do a lot of times is pick, you know, we pick winners and losers in this budget. I mean, that's what we do as we go through here, and we don't take that job lightly because that's what we have to do each year, is kind of look at, for everything that we, dollars that we spend or don't spend, it affects lives of the 550,000 approximately individuals that live in this county. And I know we don't think of it that often, but that's a heavy weight. That's what we're here for, to try to make, help make those decisions. And it's a balancing act, is what we do. It's a constant balancing act, trying to find that sweet spot in the middle, because, you know, as we kind of go through everything and look at all the numbers, you know, we've got all kinds of areas that we all have, you know, interests, we all have concerns within our county for, basically to help the lives of the individuals here in our county. And we, and everybody has their opinions, and we very much appreciate everybody's opinions as far as where the money should go, but we've got a lot of opinions as far as where that money should go. We've got, why aren't we spending more money on parks? Why aren't we doing more on roads? And this is what we hear every day, you know, literally, we hear this every day, you know, more money on the roads, more money for homeless, more money for the mental health, for their kids, for our children, for families, for environment, for law enforcement, or not for law enforcement, yeah. And so that's, that's where we're up here to try to help find that with the, you know, we have a finite amount of resources that we need to find out the best, where we can get the best bang for our buck to spend this money. And we really don't have the luxury in that, to be able to advocate just for one area. And all those areas are legitimate concerns. I get it, and we have as much concern as everybody here who comes and advocates for one area, but we've got to just look at the bigger picture and figure out where the balance is, because like I said, if we're going to give more to one area, there's another area we're taking it from, and because we have a finite amount of resources. And so we have to worry about all this stuff. So through this process, we have to have good numbers. We get good numbers to do this, and then we kind of, like I said, we pick those winners and losers each year in our budgets. I feel very comfortable, as Vito does this year, as to where we're landing. Is it exactly, is it perfect? It's not. It's not a perfect process, you know? We can't, we can't make this thing, you know, exact. I wish we could give all the money to all the areas that everybody wants, but that's just not possible. And so we try to find the balance. And this year, I'm very comfortable with this budget. We've spent a lot of time on this, besides just what's going on here today, to try to get this to a spot that we can then get before, get it before us and vote on it. And I'm very comfortable with where we are right now, and is it perfect? No. And we'll make more adjustments once we get the final numbers, the actual numbers for last year, and we get into our proposed final budget. But as far as right now, I fully support this budget and what we're looking at here today. And thank you, guys, very much for all your hard work to get to this point. I appreciate everybody's input here, and believe me, we hear all these things, not only when you guys come here, people come and speak today, but we hear them all day, every day, with phone calls, with concerns from our constituents all the time as far as what are you doing? Why are you doing this? Why isn't this money going here? And that's just part of the process. We take all that in, and we try to find that sweet spot. So thank you, guys, very much. Good budget.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Jennifer, Jewel, Patrick, Joshua, Valjeet, Rob, Mandeeb, the entire CEO team, thank you for doing all the work and putting this budget together. Our department heads, our department heads, thank you for staying within budget. I know it's tough to do at times, and sometimes you have to maneuver around to do that. It's a lot of hard work, and it's always great to go behind our resident budget hawk, Vito, and our resident CPA, Terry, on this. They do have a good understanding, and, you know, when Vito says he's comfortable with the budget, you could pretty highly think that the budget is sound, and it is sound because of the good information that comes out of the team that puts the budget together. It's trustworthy, and it's built on many years of trust because of their projections. And when they have projections, they have that information, and it is always usually pretty close, and I appreciate that very much. So I'll be supporting this budget also. All right.
Okay. I will then make a motion except.
Yeah, we did the hearing.
Perfect. I will make a motion except all staff recommendations.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Neat.
I have four to one. All right. We're going to take a quick five-minute break. Thank you. All right. Coming back into session, next public hearing is to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend or eliminate existing fees for the Department of Environmental Resources, Landfill Division. Garrett Hilton, Todd Rocha.
Good afternoon, Chairman Condit, board members, CEO Hayes, and Councilman, County Council, Bose. I'm Todd Rocha. I'm the manager of the landfills for the county. Thanks for the opportunity to present the item today. So we're here to conduct a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of a proposed ordinance that would amend certain fees associated with the Fink Road landfill administered by the Department of Environmental Resources, or DER. As part of our commitment to fiscal responsibility and transparency, the department conducts regular interviews, regular reviews of landfill service fees to ensure they remain aligned with actual program costs as required by state law. In conjunction with our annual budget process, we've completed a comprehensive cost evaluation and are recommending updates to ensure that our operations remain both financially sustainable and compliant with regulatory and compliant with regulatory requirements. Joining me today is Business Manager for DER, Garrett Hill, who will walk you through the specific fee adjustments being proposed, as well as the methodology used to develop them. If approved, the changes would take effect 30 days from adoption on July 10, 2025.
Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Chairman Condit, Honorable Board Members, CEO Hayes, and County Council Boz. My name is Garrett Hill, Business Manager for Environmental Resources. This morning, or this afternoon, I'll be presenting to you the department's proposed fee adjustments for the landfill division. At the Fink Road landfill, we recommend a 10.4% increase in the normal refuse disposal fee category. Staff are proposing an increase in this rate from $45 per ton to $49.68 per ton. Normal refuse that falls into this category includes materials such as household garbage, demolition and construction debris, lumber, bottles, cans, small dead animals, et cetera. This request, requested increase incorporates input from a third-party consultant for its analysis, along with the department's staff-owned internal review and analysis of both current and future budget needs for the landfill. Just want to clarify, this proposed adjustment to this rate will not impact disposal fees paid by the franchised haulers, so it does not affect the refuse collection rates charged in the unincorporated portions of the county. The increase will assist the department with covering increasing operational costs in the wake of the waste-to-energy facility's closure, which has resulted in an increase in unusable solid waste being disposed of at the landfill, as mentioned by Rob in the previous presentation. Operational costs include need for increased staffing levels, an increase in operational hours at the site, and equipment needs. It also helps fund necessary capital improvement projects at the site, including building out an additional cell for future garbage disposal, realignment of the haul road, and the purchase and installation of the new flare, among other projects. Just wanted to show a comparison of nearby publicly-owned landfills, which shows the proposed fee of $49.68 is within the range of what is being charged at adjacent counties. So as we look up there, we see Billy Wright in Highway 59 in Merced County at $43.05, North County in San Joaquin at $58.89 per ton, Foothill in San Joaquin at $46.14 per ton, Kiefer in Sacramento County at $59.55 per ton, and Kings Waste in Kings County at $58 per ton.
I always, sorry to interrupt. I always wonder, why did somebody get a, Billy Wright, why did he get a garbage dump named after him? Why would you do that to somebody?
There's probably the family down the property.
Okay, let's hope that's what it was. Okay. All right, sorry. Here you go.
Thank you. Additionally, with the closure of the waste-to-energy facility, the ash tipping fee at the landfill no longer applies. Therefore, the department is proposing to remove this fee category from the current In conclusion, SCAP has the following recommendation. Introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance to amend or eliminate existing fees for the Department of Environmental Resources. If approved, this change in fee will be effective July 10, 2025. Thank you all for your time this afternoon. Now we'd like to open a discussion to any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I do have just a couple of questions. I guess to bring up Billy Wright, what are they doing different than what we're doing as far as their cost? I guess how are they, how are they lower? Is it just a county thing? They're a smaller county, we're a larger county? I mean, what is the rationale with both Merced operations, you know, being a little lower?
Let me get Rob to come up and answer that question for you. He's our resident expert right now.
I don't know about expert on this one, but various landfills are gonna have different rates and fees based upon the amount of refuse that's coming in. And my understanding is they're not at the capacity that we are. It's a different type of overall operations with capacity-wise. And if I'm incorrect in that, I will get that information back to you.
Okay, and I was just curious. And then I'm just, and I don't want to assume, but I'm assuming here that the Foothill site in San Joaquin, the reason why they're lower is it's probably a smaller facility, but it's looking at their North County one, obviously they're, they are higher, so I assume that's the bigger facility. Is that right?
That's my understanding, and I believe that they're looking at their fee structure as well.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
One other comment, though, I would add, if we're gonna look at those numbers in the future, it'd also be good to recognize which ones are either publicly or privately operated as well. I think everyone's aware that in the public sector, for good reasons, we have many rules that apply to us that may not to others, but do have direct cost impacts with operations, and particularly capital projects, that are a huge driver of landfill costs as well. So in the future, if we're looking at those, if we can just know public versus private.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions?
And all the cities have been informed, correct?
Yes.
All right. And Bob in? All right.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone that would like to make a public comment on this agenda item?
Thank you, Bianca Lopez, again with Valley Improvement Projects. We're in support of increase of tipping fees. It'll do a couple of things. It'll bring in some revenue, but it'll also deter others to take their waste to another landfill versus filling in ours. So we are in favor of increasing the tipping fee. We would like to see, why not $50? I'm just wondering what the rationale is for getting to almost 50, but not quite. But then also the money that is being used, how are we tracking those new monies that are coming in and how they're going to be spent? And how is that going to actually keep things from coming to the landfill through a zero-waste plan? Our zero-waste plan had proposed a rate increase of the tipping fee by $1, so that it can fund, at a yearly basis, zero-waste plan. You're increasing a few dollars, almost five. And so we are hoping that your plan does include diversion plan for, from keeping the things to go into the landfill. So just interested in learning more about how that money's gonna be tracked, how we're already using the money that we got from the closure of the incinerator, and what we're going to do to prevent things from going to the landfill that don't necessarily need to be in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Anyone else like to make a public comment on this agenda? I'm gonna go ahead and close. Public comment. Bring it back to the board.
So Rob, can I ask one question in these fees? The post-closure of the Gare Road landfill, we're still collecting a portion of that. I can't even remember how it used to work, but as a part of the tipping fee, right?
Correct. And we'll get to that on the next presentation.
All right.
Any other? Go ahead.
Nothing else to say, if no other comment, I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a first.
Second.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
And we can get, I'm just thinking for Bianca, the questions you asked, we can get you that information.
All right, next public hearing. Public hearing to consider adjustments to the Stanislaus County maximum franchise rates for solid waste collection services. Will Richards and Robert Costle.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes and County Council Boz. My name is Will Richards, and I'm the solid waste manager for the unincorporated portions of Stanislaus County. With me today is Fidelis Guine, Staff Services Coordinator for the Solid Waste Division, and we will be proposing to adjust the maximum rates for franchise waste and recycling collection services for the unincorporated. On the screen, you'll see the county is split into four separate service areas that are serviced by three different haulers. There's Bertolotti in Area 1, Jilton in Area 2, and Turlock Scavenger has the contracts for Areas 3 and 4. The service areas contain a mixture of residential, commercial, and dropbox waste customers. The franchise haulers receive exclusive rights to the residential and commercial accounts in exchange for a franchise fee. The county retains the ability to regulate the haulers, as well as set the maximum rates that can be charged for their various services. Our current rate adjustment policy was adopted in 2008, and just for a refresher, every five years, we do a cost-based analysis to set a base rate. And then for the following four years, we do an index-based adjustment to use to the base rates in accordance with a series of consumer price indices. The current rates that we have are based on the first index-based adjustment to the base rates that were established in July of 2023, and the proposed rates you will see shortly represent the second set of index-based adjustments. The proposed rates utilize the consumer price indices as required by the approved rate adjustment process. However, due to the closure of the waste-to-energy facility, this year represents the first year that all of the county's disposal will be shifted to the Fink Road landfill. On the screen, you'll see the following adjustments that have been applied to the respective components of the maximum rates. Just want to highlight the two large numbers up there can be seen at the Fink Road and the SRRF, which stands for Stanislaus Resource Recovery Facility, also known as the Waste-to-Energy Facility, and their disposal components. Those changes represent the updated cost of disposal without the waste going to the waste-to-energy facility and moving to the Fink Road landfill. Pass it off to Fidelis.
Of the approximately 26,000 residential customers, 11,700 will see a 0.99% decrease. 5,460 will see a 0.85% decrease. 7280 customers will see a 0.21% decrease. And 6% or 1,560 will see a half percent increase in residential rates. In front of you is a table that shows the most common residential rates for the 1383 exempt areas. These residents receive one 96-gallon cart for all waste materials. The adjustments range from a decrease of .32 in Area 1 and an increase of 12 cents in Area 4. This table shows the most common residential rates for the 1383 areas. These residents receive a combination of 96-gallon carts for garbage, recycling, and organic materials. The adjustments range from a decrease of .57 in Area 1 to an increase of 26 cents in Area 4. For our commercial bin rates, of approximately 4,100 commercial customers, 1,600 will see a decrease of 2.38%. 900 will see a 0.96% decrease. 1,100 will see a 1.29% decrease. And 500 will see a 0.26% decrease. The rates on this table shown are for the most common commercial service of two-yard bins picked up once a week for the 1383 exempt areas. The adjustments range from a decrease of 2.85 cents in Area 1 to an increase of 23 cents in Area 4. The tables shown are for the most common commercial service of 1383 areas. Commercial customers in these areas receive recycling services in addition to their two-yard bin. The adjustments range from a decrease of 9 cents in Area 4 to a decrease of 3.79 in Area 1. The table in front of you is for the most common dropbox haul service of 20 to 29-yard dropboxes, and are presented the way, with adjustments ranging from a $1.60 increase in Area 4 to a $2.93 increase in Area 1. Staff recommendation today is conducting a public hearing to consider the proposed adjustments to the franchise maximum rates for refuse collection services in franchise Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4, and if approved, these rates will be effective on July 1, 2025. Thank you. We're here for any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the board?
It's good news it's going down.
Yeah. Gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone have any comment on this item?
Obviously, we support a decrease in cost for the ratepayers. I have a question about Area 4. I think that's the only one that is increasing. Is there an explanation of why we're increasing the cost for that one area?
Yeah, so the totality of the rates are built from various pieces of the pie, so to speak. So things like fuel, labor, actual disposal costs, and then bad debt and interest, all comprise their total rate. And so based on what the company has submitted to us in their financials, their disposal portion is less affected by the decrease that we've seen overall.
And then you mentioned that these were only in unincorporated areas?
That's correct.
And then all of these communities are exempt from SB 1383?
No, there's low-population areas that were designated by the state. Those areas are exempt from the 1383 regulations, but we do have several communities that are included with having the more robust 1383 collection services.
Is there a list of the communities that have been exempt from 1383?
I can provide that to you. We have, it's based on census tracts. I don't have that readily available.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Go ahead.
If, out of the percentage, the 27,000, do you know what percentage are exempt? Not what percentage, what population of the 27,000 total? Is it? If it's not, no. If you don't have it right on hand.
Offhand, no, I don't, but I can get that to you.
It's not, population-wise, it's not as big. And Bianca, going back to your question, there was a, the census tracts are real odd. And when this originally came about, there was one street in Daeneryre where that side was, had a three-can system, and this side was exempt because of census tracts. And we had our choice of, you know, taking 10 houses and then letting everyone in the unincorporated area. So we left it back to the state regulation, because we, I guess potentially we could be sued, right, from those homeowners for trying to force, force them into something that wasn't required. But it's a real odd situation. I'd like to see that map, too.
But do we give people an opportunity to opt in, right? Like, we can't just assume that they don't want to pay extra funds. We just accept, make them exempt, because the losses, they don't have to, but do we give them an option to buy in to sorting their waste?
If someone had to come through with another truck for one, you know?
But you're already across the street, though.
Oh, you mean in Daeneryre.
Well, and examples like that, yeah.
That's the extreme example. I always like to point that out, but I think that they wouldn't want to go pick it up because the cost would be prohibitive for that person that wanted to opt in. Like out on John Fox Road where I live, and there's 10 houses and three miles, there's no, no capacity for them to do it.
And then just on a zero-waste perspective, you know, there are things that we can do in those communities to keep the green waste out of the landfill from going into the black bin, and those are the really strategic and localized plans that should be created instead of just chucking it off to say, oh, we're exempt, we don't need to do that. But actually say, okay, we don't need to do that, but what can we do and how can we keep those, that green waste from the landfill, is what we're looking to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'm grateful to see that our rates in my community were not increased. We're in that group that's seeing a decrease of 0.99%, which isn't much, but in this day of high inflation, we'll take anything we can get. I think long-term, though, the best, I know we have to work toward a solution to try to reduce solid waste. Zero waste is the ideal, but I know we have to reduce it. The best thing for those of us that are on the three-bin system, like in my community, is just be more rigid in what we're doing and be more faithful in sorting everything out. And, because I know there are people in my, on my street that just throw all kinds of stuff into their black can, and they never use the blue can or the green can. So that's where we need to have more of an outreach to just be better at sorting, and at least that'll help alleviate the situation until we can come up with a more long-term solution. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephen. Any others like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments and/or a motion?
Motion to approve.
First?
Second.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, next up is public hearing to consider the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts. efforts in compliance with Government Code 3502.3, Chief Executive Office. Jennifer Jacquez. By the side. Yeah. Hockes. Yeah, there it goes. And Monica.
All right. I know it's afternoon now, so we will do our best to make this presentation very efficient. So, good afternoon, Chairman Condon, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Bose. I'm Monica Correa, Stanislas County HR Director. Can you hear me?
Yep.
HR is here to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Government Code 3502.3 in accordance with requirements of Assembly Bill 2561. The purpose of this hearing is to present the county's vacancy rates as well as our ongoing recruitment and retention efforts. Following the presentation, it is recommended that the board open the public hearing for any comments and then bring the item back to the board for discussion. Effective January 1, 2025, Assembly Bill 2561 added Government Code 3502.3, aimed at increasing transparency in public employment and addressing persistently high vacancy rates across California public agencies. This new law requires public agencies at least once per fiscal year and prior to adopting the final budget to present vacancy-related data in a public hearing. This includes the status of job vacancies, ongoing recruitment and retention efforts, and identifying any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to obstacles in the hiring process. Additionally, the law grants recognize employee organizations the right to participate in this hearing to present information about vacancies and the bargaining units that they represent. Finally, if a labor organization requests it, and if vacancies in a bargaining unit meet or exceed 20% of the total number of full-time positions, the agency must provide detailed information, including the total number of vacancies within the bargaining unit, the total number of applications for vacant positions received within the bargaining unit, the average number of days to complete the hiring process from when a position was posted, and opportunities to improve compensation and other working conditions. And I want to note, we did not receive a request from the labor unions for this additional information. With that, I will now turn it over to Jennifer Hockes to present Stanislas County's vacancy data and workforce efforts.
Thank you, Monica. Good afternoon, Chairman Condon, members of the board, CEO Hayes, and County Council Bose. My name is Jennifer Hockes, Senior Management Consultant with CEO HR. Today, I will be providing an overview of Stanislas County's vacancy rates, recruitment and retention initiatives, and any policy procedural challenges impacting recruitment and retention, and Stanislas County's efforts to address these obstacles. The information covers the period from March 1, 2024, through February 28, 2025, with vacancy dated, data reported as of March 1, 2025. As of that date, the county's overall vacancy rate was 13.1% with 645 vacant positions out of the 4,942 allocated. Stanislas County has 19 bargaining units with 15 represented by 12 recognized employee organizations and four unrepresented bargaining units. This chart displays the vacancy rate by bargaining unit as the new government code indicates. As of March 1, 2025, four bargaining units had a vacancy rate exceeding 20%. These include Stanislas Regional Emergency Dispatchers Association with a vacancy rate of 24.4%, Stanislas County Probation Corrections Officers Association at 24.2%, California Nurses Association at 23%, and Stanislas County Deputy Probation Officers Association at 21.6%. Turning to the county's staffing activity of full-time employees from March 1, 2024 to February 28, 2025, these figures on the screen give us a snapshot of the movement within our workforce. First, 408 full-time employees separated from county employment during this period. This includes retirements, resignations, and other forms of departure. In response, we hired 552 full-time new employees into county service. Additionally, 575 county employees were promoted into new roles, highlighting internal career mobility. And finally, a net of 60 new positions were added to address service demands and program To address staffing challenges and promote workforce stability, Stanislas County has implemented a series of strategic recruitment initiatives over the past year. These efforts have focused on increasing visibility and outreach through the development of branded recruitment materials, expanding advertising, and launching continuous recruitments in high-need classifications. The county has also provided 55 trainings to department recruitment staff to improve hiring outcomes, participated in multiple targeted job fairs, and extended the Employee Choice Bonus Plan to support both recruitment and retention. These initiatives have resulted in increased recruitment activity and engagement during the reporting period. This includes opening 380 recruitments, receiving nearly 23 applications, and over 550,000 online hits to job postings. This activity reflects strong candidate interest and progress towards filling vacancies. This chart shows the trend in job applications submitted to Stanislas County over the past five years, covering the period from March 1 through February 28 each year. The shifts we see in application volume reflect broader changes in workforce conditions and hiring priorities over time. For example, during 2020 and 2021, the COVID-19 pandemic caused a slowdown in hiring. As a result, remote operations and staffing adjustments made recruiting more challenging. Then, from 2021 to 2022, as in-person work resumed, departments actively replenished their workforces by filling vacancies, which led to a sharp increase in recruitment activity. Between 2022 and 2024, the launch of the Employee Choice Bonus Plan expanded the talent pool and drove a surge in applications. Most recently, in 2024 to 2025, as positions were replenished and the overall vacancy rate became more stable, fewer openings were available. This naturally resulted in a decline in application submissions. In addition to our recruitment efforts, Stanislas County continues to prioritize retention and employee engagement as key components of our broader workforce strategy. Over the past year, several initiatives have contributed to these goals. The Employee Choice Bonus Plan has proven effective as both a hiring and retention incentive, supporting the onboarding of nearly 1,000 new employees since its implementation in August of 2022. On April 29, 2025, this board approved the extension of the Employee Choice Bonus Plan for new hires through June 30, 2026. We also relaunched the county-wide employee engagement survey to better understand employee needs and shape future retention and engagement strategies, with over 2,000 employees participating in the 2024 survey. A comprehensive review of leadership core competencies is currently underway to ensure alignment with organizational goals and to support employee and leadership development. Learning and development opportunities have been expanded, with more than 500 employees voluntarily completing training programs focused on skill-building, career advancement, and succession planning. We strengthen internal communications to enhance outreach and increase participation in various programs, such as our monthly Stand Worthy newsletter and internal employee page called Connect. Investments in leadership development are helping us cultivate future leaders from within the county. An executive leadership program through California Association of Counties, or CSAC, is planned to launch in the fall of 2025. Additionally, we hosted 76 wellness classes through wellness, through our Wellness Connect program, promoting employee well-being and work-life balance. Finally, key engagement programs have advanced, including a revamped new employee orientation, our annual peer coaching program, and a new service award platform to recognize years of service. The county has observed shifting workforce trends and recognizes the need to update key policies to better attract, hire, and retain employees. Several county policies and procedures have been reviewed, revised, and recommended to be amended. In fact, just today, your board approved two policies focused on the improvement of recruitment and retention. Additional policy recommendations will be brought forward to the board for approval in the coming months. These updates are designed to remove barriers and create a more competitive and supportive hiring process, enhancing the overall employee experience. Importantly, these changes address any policy or procedural challenges impacting the hiring process. This slide highlights several key hiring obstacles along with proposed solutions. First, the current rule of five limits candidate referrals by allowing only five interview referrals for one vacancy, which restricts hiring options. Expanding this to a rule of seven will increase selection options and improve hiring outcomes. Second, the time to hire is currently lengthy, involving multiple steps and unexpected delays that slow recruitment efforts. By enhancing planning and preparation before opening a recruitment, we can accelerate hiring timelines. Third, knowledge gaps in the hiring process cause procedural delays. To address this, we plan to continue focusing training resources on key areas, equipping staff with the tools needed for independent success. Fourth, appointments at the fifth step of the salary range for highly qualified candidates require board approval, which creates administrative barriers and delays in the hiring process. Granting authority to the Chief Executive Officer to approve these appointments will streamline the process and accelerating, accelerate the hiring timeline. Finally, service credit from previous Stanislas County employment is not currently carried over after separation from the county. Stanislas County has recommended an updated policy to this board to grant credit for all full-time cumulative county service for vacation accruals and service awards to support long-term employee retention for employees rejoining the county workforce. Together, these policy updates will help the county remain competitive, responsive, and efficient in hiring and workforce retention.
This concludes Stanislas County's presentation on the vacancy rates and recruitment and retention efforts. We did notify our 12 labor organizations of their opportunity to present in today's hearing. Stanislas Regional Emergency Dispatchers Association has responded and will be presenting in accordance to Government Code 3502.3. We did not hear from the other labor groups and did not receive requests for the additional information for those bargaining units with vacancy rates above 20%. At this time, we'd like to invite Sridha to the podium for their presentation.
My name's Erica Corolo. I am a dispatch supervisor at SR 911. I'm the secretary of Sridha E. Board. I have worked at SR 911 since 2005, and this morning I wanted to address to the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the Sridha membership, speaking on our staffing issues at SR 911 from the perspective of the actual dispatchers who save lives every day in Stanislas County. The major concerns from our membership are the following: oversights that eventually contribute to understaffing, high turnover, and poor retention, and poor morale as well. Annual reporting consistently outlines staffing at SR 911 without much-needed context, which overreports the number of deployable dispatchers who are trained and available to work full-time. Full-time dispatchers and deployable dispatchers are not the same thing. For example, an employee hired in 2023 as a dispatcher-one went on FMLA before completing her call-taking training, which is a requirement before you become a radio dispatcher. On February 24, 2024, they were out on FMLA leave and have been on protected leave ever since. That employee is not a deployable dispatcher, yet they occupy a D1 slot in staffing reports, and they are considered a full-time employee in all reporting, even though they are not operating independently as a call-taker nor as a dispatcher. This scenario is one of many examples of missing contextual information regarding staffing, and this employee prevents the county from hiring for that D1 spot to this day. Another example of reporting without context is this. SR 911 currently has five trainees as full-time employees: two call-taker trainees, two dispatcher-one trainees, which is journey level, and one dispatcher-two trainee, which is a lateral. The two answering, the two call-taker trainees, rather, are training, therefore, they are not answering 911s or non-emergency law, fire, or admin lines independently. The two D1s are likewise in call-taker training, and they're not answering those same lines independently without a trainer assisting them, which must be completed before they can start training on a police, sheriff, or fire radio. The D2 trainee is a lateral who is now on medical leave until further notice and has not completed radio training and does not contribute to staffing. These five examples on paper infer that all full-time employees can work independently and staff our center, but zero of these five people can work a radio yet. However, their spots in our employee roster are locked in, and the county does not recruit or back hire while these spots are occupied. The county will only post job opportunities at SR 911 where a spot is vacant, despite a continuous ongoing need for dispatchers and call-takers. Retirements, medical leave, special assignments like custodian of records, terminations and resignations are extremely common, especially in a job where we work 12-hour shifts, most of the time without lunch breaks, and only able to use the restroom or microwave food if our partners in the room take our radio channels from us to do so, which means one dispatcher listening to two channels simultaneously, or sometimes three if they're letting their fire dispatcher partner go down the hall who works a patched fire channel. This example also highlights the dire need for more call-taker positions allocated to train new call-takers during their phone training phase and relieve the radio dispatchers, allowing them to focus on radio trainees in order to improve staffing. Sridha strongly believes that the hiring and background process is primarily to blame for this. A current trainee confirmed this week that their hiring process includes the following: application with a typing certificate included. Typing certificates must be scheduled by educational or workforce institutions and oftentimes are booked out weeks in advance. The county posts call-taker and dispatch job postings for one week before they close the listing, which means one week for an interested applicant to submit an application, get it in with a typing certificate within five business days. Internet typing certificates are not accepted by the county, which is overlooking an opportunity to screen people for typing ability where they can later be screened in-house for typing speed during their background process. Yesterday, Sridha called each of these agencies listed in the current list of Stanislas County typing certificate testing sites for the hours and availability of each office, and not only are different from what is posted on the State County Requirements page, but two of them don't even offer typing certificate testing any longer. This requirement to apply prevents qualified, interested applicants from even applying, much less making it to interview boards. Additionally, a current trainee also outlined their hiring process as of this year includes the following: an application with typing certificate, which, as outlined above, is difficult to obtain in such a short time period; an online exam, a first oral interview, second oral interview; read-me-force documents, a personal history statement, and two questionnaires; a background packet including an appointment for live-scan fingerprinting. After this initial process, they are screened, and applicants that continue forward wait to be contacted by the county for the following: an online psyche eval, an in-person psyche eval, a meeting with the executive director, NeoGov onboarding documents, a physical and a direct test. If they complete this process satisfactorily at this point, then they receive a start date, and at this point, the hiring process has now taken six months. After six months, trainees spend six weeks in an in-house academy where they are taught principles of 911 call-taking, 10 codes, CAD codes for categorizing call types, and practicing entering calls on a training CAD system. After six weeks, they come to trainers on the floor, often with trainers who are radio dispatchers, who have to staff one or two radios themselves while training their trainee on phones simultaneously. Depending on the success of the trainee, their call-taking could be anywhere, their call-taking training could take anywhere from four months or more. After successfully completing call-taker training, if the applicant is cut loose and able to work independently, then they are a deployable call-taker. If the applicant was hired as a dispatcher, they then must start their radio training process, which can take six months, depending on the trainee's grasp and ability of law or fire radios. During this time, trainees often find that working 12-hour shifts, working night shift from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., which I will be doing tonight, working weekends and holidays is too much of a strain on their lives, and many of them resign. The time during which they spent training before resigning, they occupied a full-time call-taker or dispatcher spot, and during that time, no one was able to apply for future positions, much less begin the six-month screening process involved that is required to be hired before they can see if a career in 911 is for them. While this application and background and hiring process is occurring, dispatchers on the floor who are training new hires are doing two jobs at once: working a radio, or two if working a radio, or two if they're working the patched fire radio, and doing their normal work volume while simultaneously teaching their trainee and listening to their calls and assisting them in real time with calls ranging from parking problems to shootings and suicides. This added labor, while a reality of getting people trained to work alongside us and relieve some of our shared workload, takes a toll on dispatchers and is exhausting. This exhaustion and the disappointment of trainees resigning or demoting to part-time status to better accommodate their home lives is extremely discouraging and sends morale spiraling downwards, causing full-time dispatchers even to reconsider their careers and their future in a department, where staffing is always at best treading water and at worst drowning. The Sharita Board and membership have lots of ideas about how to streamline the application, background, and hiring process. The most obvious of them in our mind is to have job listings for call-takers and dispatchers be a continuous recruitment. One week is simply not long enough to solicit qualified, interested applicants. In other county departments, onboarding is a matter of verifying someone's credentials and education and then giving them a tour of where their office is, where the restroom is, and where the coffee pot is. At SR911, onboarding new employees includes learning a unique computer system for entering and dispatching 911 calls; a phone system for answering 911 in non-emergency police and fire lines; learning 10 codes and CAD codes, which are a new language unto its own; and last but most importantly, how to talk to people whose children have stopped breathing, whose houses are on fire, and who are being shot at. Another idea is to have our own in-house recruiting employee who could proctor a day of typing tests, meet a group of applicants all at a live-scan site for fingerprinting, schedule psych tests, and more. This type of in-house recruiting and background checks could be tailored to the needs of 911 operations in Stanislas County and would certainly save the county money. Paying overtime rates to employees who are mandated on days off, like I am today, and held over for sick call-outs is costly to the county, and better staffing with a more streamlined in-house process would certainly pay off fiscally over time. Finally, a new classification of call-taker or dispatcher-trainee to separate non-deployable trainees from full-time deployable labor in the department. This labor distinction would provide the department and the county a more accurate picture of when to recruit and have applicants on standby, ready to be added to our in-house academy much faster and more reliably. Sharita members are very motivated to assist in improving these processes, which prevent qualified applicants from joining us in our life-saving work. We ask that the Board of Supervisor continue, consider having continued talks with our board and membership about these ideas, which would not only improve staffing and morale at SR911, but would increase our ability to develop long-term careers for those who want to work and retire within Stanislas County for years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Erica. With that, we have one staff recommendation: to accept the public hearing report on the status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts and receive public comment pursuant to Government Code 3502.3. And we will bring it back to the board for any comments or discussion.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing portion. Anybody have any public comments on this agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close it and bring it back to the board for any comments and/or motion.
Yeah, I know this is mandatory. And I know during my budget hearing when we were talking about this, it comes back to we can only spend 90.5% of our budget in order not to start utilizing reserves, meaning that we need vacancies, but we don't need those vacancies. We don't need DPOs. I see probations here. And because those are positions that are required and necessary. So again, I think we talk internally about how we'll do recruitments, but as we do better on, in these departments, to get them under 20, it potentially comes at a cost, just what we said we compete for funding. And we know there's an issue at Sharita or at the 911 Center, and the uncertainty hasn't helped in the situation, just the uncertainty that's been created around it. Appreciate all of you do. Appreciate probation. Just the same, you guys are all rock stars. Yeah, motion, motion to accept.
I was just going to say that I appreciate hearing from Sharita. Usually, some of the best ideas come from the shop floor and interested in hearing more about those. Again, probation, great job. Correct?
Motion to accept.
Have first?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to discussion items: approval to adopt the Mental Health Services Act, annual update for fiscal year 2025-26, and the three-year prevention early intervention evaluation report for fiscal years 2021, 2022, 2022 to 23, and 23 to 24 and related actions. Reuben and Perry.
Be a good time to break for lunch.
I'm the only thing standing in between everybody in this room with lunch?
No way.
I know that. Supervisor, Chairman Condit, Board of Supervisors, CEO Hayes, and County Council Bose. My name is Reuben Imperial, and I am the Director for the county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Today, I am presenting on the Mental Health Services Act. And this report often, and does, point backwards and often highlights the work of the Mental Health Services Act over the last year. In the board agenda item, I added quite a bit of information about the Behavioral Health Services Act and what's coming with the implementation of that act for our county. So I am going to spend some time, the time that I do have, focused on future actions related to this. So just as a reminder, we are the county's Behavioral Health Plan Administrator. We provide mental health services for individuals with severe mental illness and substance use disorder, and children with serious emotional disturbances. In addition to treatment services, we provide an array of supportive services as well as prevention and early intervention. And we also, and we also are, the department also houses the Office of Public Guardian, which serves as the legally-appointed conservator for individuals unable to care for themselves. And one of our, one of our authorities and one of our budget allocations is through what's called the Mental Health Services Act. It was passed in 2004, and it taxes incomes over $1 million, or personal income over $1 million. And there is several components to this. The funding categories are what's probably most important to know. The way the funds have to be expended are prescribed in the statute, in the law. Currently, we have innovations programs, prevention and early intervention, and the community supports, community services and supports. To expend these funds, the county must prepare a three-year program and expenditure plan, which is what we are doing today, which we are reporting on today, and gain approval of the plan through an annual stakeholder process, spend in accordance to that plan, and then prepare and submit an annual review, which is what we're doing here today on that plan. Just to give you the scope of and the impact of the Mental Health Services Act on the county budget. Today, our budget in proposed was approved for $250-plus million. We use $36 million of Mental Health Services Act to fund that budget. And again, those are the categories in which it's funded. And when you add the Med-Cal revenue, we generate as a result of that 36 million. You're easily getting to doubling those amounts of monies. However, one of the features of the Mental Health Services Act, because it's reliant on income tax, it is quite volatile. And as you can see, this is the historical trend over the last several years. And with the dips and the ups and downs, it is a budget allocation that is specifically for us very challenging to manage. When you look at just from three years ago, the high, or historic high for Mental Health Services Act reached $50 million. And just within the last three years, that has declined 27%. This year's allocation, as I noted in the previous slide, will be in the area of $36.9 million. Yeah, 36.9. So it is a, it is a, it's a substantive funding stream, and it's also a very volatile funding stream. And it requires us that we develop a fund strategy or a fund balance strategy that accounts for those fluctuations, so that we are not cutting programs abruptly with the increases and decreases in this revenue stream. So for the fiscal year 25-26, we are not recommending any substantive changes along the service-level line, but there are some pretty substantive fiscal adjustments we're making in light of the trajectory that you had just saw when it comes to this year's allocation being 27% down from two years ago. We are redirecting $12 million in adult residential facility contracts from Mental Health Services Act funds over to our BHRS Services Budget Unit. So we're going to, instead of paying with AMHSA money, we're going to be paying with realignment dollars. We are also transferring out from, transfer some CSS to capital facilities and technology needs. We're reducing that. We're reallocating $1 million that we were paying for electronic health record over again to the BHRS Budget Unit and spreading it out over a few years. And as I said, there is no service-level impacts, but these are budget adjustments that we are making in light of the pressure that we're seeing on the Mental Health Services Act fund balance. Thankfully, the realignment fund balance is pretty substantive. Over the last few years, that also has increased, so we were able to balance those changes in revenues, and we'll be able to get to the next couple of years moving forward. So I am going now to talk about the Behavioral Health Services Act, which, when you, when you hear about mental health, especially in the state of California, what's, how Behavioral Health Service Act has been described is pretty substantive. When you, first of all, it's going from the Mental Health Services Act to the Behavioral Health Services Act, and primarily that changes because it is now including, the act does now allow for investments and to pay for substance use disorder services. Primarily, it was only used for mental health treatment. So now that it's combined, the name is changed for Behavioral Health. That's the name we use to describe when we're providing both services, both SUD and mental health. But if you do read from the guidance from Department of State, the Department of Healthcare Services from the Governor's Office, BHSA has been described as a comprehensive restructuring of California's mental health, behavioral health system. It's also been described, it's transforming its entire mental health and SUD system. Basically, what it does, it reforms behavioral healthcare funding to prioritize services for people with the most significant mental health needs, while adding the treatment of substance use disorders, expanding housing interventions, and increasing the behavioral health workforce. So I thought it was prudent to brief the board, because at this juncture, we are required to implement the Behavioral Health Services Act by July 1st, 2026. The department will launch our planning processes within the next few weeks, and this presentation, this information is going to start to be shared within our community in terms of what we are seeing and what we're beginning to see as the impacts of the implementation of the Behavioral Health Services Act. So what Behavioral Health Services Act does, it does a few things. It changes some policy. It changes how the county budgets for mental health services. So the first one that I want to mention is on policy level. It increased focus on the most vulnerable populations experiencing homelessness and serious mental illness. A broadening of the responsibilities of the county Behavioral Health Plan to intentionally include providing housing interventions and allowing Behavioral Health Services Act funds to be spent on substance use disorders. So those are the major changes in, the last, the last bullet point alludes to the fact that, and I'll get to this in a moment, that it is eliminating the prevention and early intervention funding revenue. Basically, it is redirecting those dollars to, again, those most vulnerable populations experiencing homelessness and serious mental illness. So it is a redirection of funds and adding revenues and adding funds to add housing and housing interventions as well. So that's, that's the policy level changes for BHSA. It also directly impacts how we budget, and it is categorizing our budgets in ways that are really prescribed. So for our budgets, instead of the categories that I shared with you before, the new categories are housing interventions, full-service partnerships, behavioral health services and supports. And there's a real emphasis on maximizing Med-Cal funding. And I'm going a little bit, just in a moment there. The last part of this is just how counties are accountable in terms of the Behavioral Health Plan and the funds and the expenditures of those, of the plan, the local mental health plan. First of all, it also expands stakeholder and community input into the process and into our budgeting process. It's accounting for funding beyond BHSA in the integrated plan and publicly reporting on key indicators settled by the state each year. So a few comments about this. So the first, the second one, accounting for funding beyond the BHSA. As I noted, we come every year and present on the Mental Health Services Act expenditures and how we're using those monies. We are now going to be required to report on the entirety of our budget and all revenue streams, and I'll show you what those are in the next, in the next slide. The, there is also publicly reporting on key indicators settled by the state. So instead of the way we've done it here, the state now has a set of prescribed performance measures that counties will report on, and we will be required to come to report to the Board of Supervisors on those performance measures. And over the last, you know, probably several years, those indicators and a lot of these planned components have been worked out at the state level with the counties and other interested stakeholders. So just to show you a little bit of a visual here. So currently on the left-hand side, that's how we currently allocate our monies: the Mental Health Services Act, Community Services and Supports, Prevention, Early Intervention Innovations, and 5% for Admin. With the new structure, you can see that prevention and early intervention and innovations go away. And now what we have is those three major categories: housing interventions, F full-service partnerships, and behavioral health services and supports. Now, housing interventions is not necessarily new. We have been funding housing projects in terms of helping with startup costs and funding the operations and developing partnerships with housing developers to subsidize housing programs. But this now says we've got to do, we've got to allocate 30% of our budgets to do that. And that's new. And so it's prescribed, and it's part of our plan. Full-service partnerships, again, we've always done full-service partnerships. What full-service partnerships means, it's a definition of a type of treatment program, a type of a treatment program that is very prescribed as well. It got its caseloads mandates. It got its program requirements, such as remaining 24/7, operating 24/7. We're going out and finding people in the field and in the community. So again, it's a, full-service partnerships is just a description of a type of treatment program, and it's an evidence-based practice. So again, a prescribed area. And then Behavioral Health Services Supports, that's for everybody else that does not qualify for that full-service partnership program and a broader array of services. So we're going from the left, where we have prevention, innovations, community services, and supports. Now we're going to a much more prescribed set of allocations that the department will have to implement, again, not just for our Mental Health Services Act funds, but for a broader range of funds that we provide. And you'll notice the state allocation went up by 5%. So there's, they will now be taking on prevention at the state level. They'll be working on workforce initiatives, and then there's 3% for administration. Part of that 27% decrease from two years ago is also accounting for that they took an additional 5% for next fiscal year, because I believe that started next fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes. So those are the concrete changes there. To say that this is, you know, to be real transparent, this is a very substantive shift in how the organization is structured and organized. It, again, the funding, and again, how these, these programs are funded, it's going to have an impact. And the way it'll have an impact is we've got to take our currently funded programs and figure out where they fit into the new buckets. And when we do that, that's the process that we're about to start over the next several weeks and in the next few months. And we'll return to the board towards the end of the year with what's that looking like. But that's the exercise that we have to go through. The, there's another major change and another major requirement that I've already stated, There's another major change and another major requirement that I've already stated, which is this integrated plan, which basically says, instead of just coming and presenting on the Mental Health Services Act funds, we are now going to be reporting on the use and how we're using 91 realignment, 2011 realignment, how much Medicare the organization is drawing down, and then all of the other grants and allocations that the department has, including the opioid settlement funds that the department has been allocated. This does not include all opioid settlement funds. These are the, these are the only funds that have been allocated to BHRS. So again, another major change in how we budget and how we present the budget to the board, which is usually through our annual budgeting process. This now is going to require a public process as we're doing here today. So again, this is the details of those reports. There is a comprehensive summary of how the funds were spent, and also, the reporting is also going to require not just what was spent on, how many people were served, and then the outcomes achieved. That report is also going to require that we identify any gaps. So based on the revenues that we have, where are the gaps that still exist? Assess performance across the continuum of care and promote transparency and public, with the public and policymakers. That report, as with the Mental Health Services Act, will require Board of Supervisors approval and attestation, making sure that we are meeting all the statutory requirements of the Behavioral Health Services Act. There are some requirements for us to partner with our managed care plans and public health, primarily around the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan. The community health improvement plan, anything identified within the community health improvement plan that is mental health related, we will have to address in our integrated plan. So as our public health department puts that community health assessment together and the community health improvement plan, we are now going to be required to report to the state about how we're addressing any of the issues that are emerging, that are mental health related and within our purview as part of our integrated plan. There is quite a bit of data sharing and collaboration around data sharing that is happening with our managed care plans as well, and we will be responsible also to report that to you. These are our, these are our upcoming deadlines. So by March 31st, 2026, the department will need to return, will need submit, will need to submit a draft integrated plan to the state for review. They will, they will review that plan, I imagine before the Board of Supervisors, because we'll be coming back to the Board of Supervisors before June 30th, 2026, and our next annual update will be on March 31st, 2027. I will say that, before I get to staff recommendations, that I do agree with how this has been described at the state, especially by Department of State, Department of Healthcare Services, that this is a substantive change. This is a very comprehensive restructuring of the county, of the state's mental health system and now the county mental health system. Over the last two to three years, there's been quite an investment and quite a bit changes in terms of county mental health. If you remember, we've implemented programs like the Care Court, SB 43, and the changes with SUD related to LPSC conservatorships. We have had changes on how the state is holding counties accountable in terms of incompetent to stand trial determinations. We have substantively, substantively expanded our, our mental health mobile community-based crisis response programs. You know, we went from seeing, you know, a few thousand individuals in the, in the field, you know, just two or three years ago. I think the latest number here, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but we're now seeing, just a couple of years ago, just in the community mobile crisis response, where we would go out with clinicians to the community, just in 2024, we were seeing 5,700. This year, the year's not over yet, and we've already seen over 11,000, almost 12,000 individual crisis services, and not people, these are crisis services, not people. So that we are seeing an increase in, in crisis services because we are seeing a difference in how we're responding to mental health crisis. The state mandated that behavioral health departments implement mobile community response, and we did. We added, just to give you an idea, we had, we have about 73 full-time employees in our, in our access line and our community emergency response system of care. About half of those positions were added just within the last two years to do mobile community crisis response. In addition to just these, these program changes and expansions, we've also implemented what's called payment reform, Medicare payment reform in the last two years, but it has significantly changed the way the county builds Medicare for these specialty mental health services and SUD services. So there's been quite a bit of change just in terms of the compliance and managing what's called our behavioral health plan. So I say all of that because what BHSA is setting us up to do is taking a look back over the last two to three years with all of these changes that have happened within county mental health, looking at what's changed, looking at what's working for us, and all these new requirements basically requiring us to basically reset what we're doing as an organization, and looking forward over the next two to three years on what has worked over the last couple of years, what is working, what do we need to sustain, and most importantly, how do we move forward. So over the next, over the next year, it's going to be very, very busy at Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. This planning process alone is going to require a substantive amount of staff time and management time. All the while, we're continuing to provide services in our community and address major, major challenges. So I just wanted to alert the board that our behavioral health department will be busy. We're going to have a lot of work to do over the next several months. I will say that there will be changes specifically when we are, when there is no longer funding for what's called a prevention and early intervention portion of our organization. As you can see, within this budget currently, it's several million dollars. We are already beginning to identify programs that we have not identified a revenue stream for come July 1st, 2026. And just an example of notifications we've already started to share were programs like our Community Health Worker Promotor Project. That's been a program that's been funded within our community over the last decade, and because of these changes with Behavioral Health Services Act, there is no, the county does not have an identified revenue stream right now for those services starting July 1st, 2026. And so we've been communicating with our contractors and our partners, we've been working with them, letting them know these changes are coming. And over the next two to three months, that planning process will begin in earnest. So with that, I'm going to close with our staff recommendations, which are, staff recommendation one, adopt the Mental Health Services Act Annual Update for Fiscal Year 2526, and report actual results for Fiscal Year 2324, and allow the expenditure of MHSA funds for the services referenced in the annual update. Authorize the Behavioral Health Director or designate to sign and submit the MHSA Annual Update for Fiscal Year 2526 to the Department of Healthcare Services and Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission. Authorize the Auditor Controller or designate to sign the Mental Health Services Act County Fiscal Accountability, certifying that the fiscal requirements have been met, and then finally adopt the Mental Health Services Act Prevention and Early Intervention Three-Year Evaluation Report for Fiscal Years 2122 through Fiscal Years 2324. And with that, that concludes my report and open to any questions. I am here also with several members of our senior leadership team to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ruben. Any questions?
No questions, Ruben, just a couple of comments real quick here. So thanks, good presentation, thank you for that. So change is hard, and I know this is a big change, the way things are being done here, but I just wanted you to comment a little bit about it. It seems like it makes sense, you know, when I look at it, you look at all, the one slide you had that showed the, talked about BHRS reporting requirements, the integrated plan, the IP, and you look at all those sources of funding, you know, and it makes sense that they're going to want to, they want us to produce a report that, that talks about, you know, these, you know, funding streams and how they're being spent and kind of, you know, if they're, the results of those, of that money being spent, that all seems to kind of make sense. So the mental health, so first, that's the first, that's just my, my observation. Tell me, do you think that too, or what do you think as far as these changes that are, that we're having to do here?
I agree. The change, that level of transparency and reporting on the revenue streams, the amount of services, that amount of revenue streams provide, the number of people we serve, I think there's two effects on that. One, it really helps us understand when it comes to the amount of revenue we get for mental health and substance use disorder services, what does that buy and what can that produce in the community? And in terms of just overall public transparency and accountability for these funds, yeah, I mean, homelessness and this intersections between substance use disorder and mental illness is a high priority for our community. And you always hear, what are we doing to serve this population? This is the opportunity for the department to share and what we're doing and what we're doing with those dollars, which is always going to be a good, a good, a good pathway for us, yes.
Perfect, that's great. Then I just want to make sure I was on track here and just get your information, that's perfect. So then, the other thing is, you know, we know this was coming, we've known this was coming for a while, and I know you mentioned like promotoras and stuff, we have these great programs that are out there, and because of this, there's changes in how this is, you know, like you said, the income stream for these are moving to different, different areas and not available anymore. But I know, because I've seen you do it before, you know, we've been talking for a while here about the change in the way that they're going to have to do business and sort of our non-government organizations that are out there having to do business. And I know a lot of us have heard from the Parent Resource Center too, and just what's going on there too. But there still are, they still have the ability to get funding, they just have to change the way they do it, and, and, and that's where it comes down to this Medicare billing, right? Where now all of a sudden, they're going to be, they're going to have to start billing Medicare, where in the past it was these grants that came from, from the county. So there's still, you know, and I know a lot of them aren't up and running, and that's, not trying to make that sound like an easy thing to do, because I know it's not, but, but it's not like we haven't been talking about this for a while, that this is coming down the track, you guys need to figure out how to start doing this billing and maybe even partnering with other agencies to do that. So, and I think that's starting to happen. And so it, it's hard right now with change, change is hard, like we said, but I think in the end, this is going to be, we're going to be able to produce a better product here and get better results, and the state's asking us to do this for a reason, that they want to see, you know, what are you doing with all this money that we've, all these different income streams that have been coming. So I think in the end, this will be, this will be a good thing, and we'll have better results, and like you say, the transparency, all that thing will be, all that will be good. The hard part is, as we transition into this, for certain agencies, non-governmental organizations that are out to provide just great services, we've got to get them to switch gears and get on board with us, and I know you're working hard to do that, so, anyway, good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking, because it provides me an opportunity. I hope I have more time to talk a little bit about these things, but with prevention, early intervention, there's two things I think are important to note. The Community Health Worker Benefit, which is the promotoria program, managed care plans as of a few years ago now have the ability to pay for those services. So we've advised our promotoria contractors, and we've connected them with our local managed care plans to sign contracts for community health worker programs, and they can build the managed care Medicare for that service now. And then on our end, the other service is what's called the mild to moderate benefit, mental health treatment, primarily individual therapy. Again, that's, we're under pressure now to, on those programs to fund those, but now the managed care plans also have the ability to do contracts for those services, and that's their, that's, that's the revenue stream now where those, those services should be funded. And in the event where we're pressured or you, we, it's not right for us to be using these BHSA dollars to fund those programs when there is already another revenue stream allocated for that. So if, if the managed care plans are not funding those programs, basically we're, we're shortchanging our community by not leveraging those funds and making sure the appropriate funders of those services are funding those programs.
And that reminds me all the time, Vito's constantly saying this, are we looking for all the potential income streams, other, other sources of funding? And that's just what we're going to have to have.
Yes, that's the exercise.
Chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, you know, due to the proposition and with the will of the voters, these modifications and changes are going to be hard to stomach, hard to bear. I do believe we're up for the challenge. I have full confidence in you, Ruben, and your leadership and your vision to try to carry on these programs in some capacity, especially the promotoria program, which I know is near and dear to your heart as well as mine. Obviously, I would hate to see any casualties of these services that have been inherent in our community for many years. They provide much-needed services, they provide an outlet for our community members. So I'm standing shoulder and shoulder with you and trying to come up with creative ways to keep these going and just keep to the best benefit of the community. I think that's what we all want, that's what we all desire, but change is difficult. We're going to stay resilient, and we're going to be outside-the-box thinkers when, when coming to this, but let's just try to stay ahead of it, and let's try to be as proactive as possible. So thank you.
I love seeing your team here, because it's going to take a team effort. Thank you all for being here.
I'm glad they're still here.
Big changes, yes. I think they went and had lunch and came back.
Ruben, correct me if I'm wrong, I may be wrong in saying this, but we've been moving this direction for a while now, where we're going to provide treatment for our most severe, and the less severe managed care is going to start taking care of, right? I mean, we've been moving this way for a while.
Yeah, when I, when I was previously director, it was, it was very, it was a very strategic strategy to redirect resources in this way and to leverage the Medicare managed care plans to, to pay for their levels of services that they should be paying for. Yeah, we've been moving in that direction.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open up a public comment. Any public comment on this agenda? Saying done, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
Got a first?
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving to correspondence, we're going to acknowledge the receipt of our correspondence and refer as recommended on the agenda, Board of Supervisor reports, any Board of Supervisor reports. Go ahead, Chance.
I do have a report, and unfortunately, it's, I wouldn't say it's necessarily a positive one, but I do want to take the opportunity to address just a few falsities that occurred over the weekend regarding county business and my conduct, and I just want to take the time to set the record straight, so just please bear with me. A letter was issued by Senator Raul Rado Gil stating, quote, "The Western Hills Water District and the residents of Diablo Grande are in a preventable crisis, and those in positions of authority have failed to act." You know, I'd like to take the moment to applaud the senator for finally taking notice and entering into this conversation. I know we've been waiting for her to weigh in for quite some time. This letter was the first sentence that any of us in the community were aware that she was even tracking this issue, but I guess better late than never. And up to this point, myself and others in the Diablo Grande community didn't even know that the senator was aware of the troubles that the community had been facing, let alone would be able to locate the community on a map. But let me take this opportunity to update the actions that have been taken up to this point. And since April, along with Supervisor Whitrow, several joint meetings have taken place with all the local irrigation districts and the county to brainstorm short and long-term solutions. I have convened multiple meetings with Governor Newsom's office, and most recently started the conversation with them about Western Hills Water District becoming a public utility at the water district's request. I have also facilitated several meetings with private entities about a possible buyout of the district's debt, and all those options are currently on the table and being weighed and will be considered moving forward. But what we need more than ever is time. As we all know, June 28th will tell us a lot about what the future holds for, with the rate increase vote that will be taken by the community. We are all waiting to see what direction the community takes and will determine what steps will occur after. I am hopeful that the rate increase passes, and it must pass, in order to give us enough time to see what, see one of these options through, both short term and long term. I do want to thank Supervisor Whitrow for his consistent support throughout the process, as well as Assemblyman Alan Neese and his office and his staff for being diligent and stand ready when needed. On another matter, it's unfortunate, but I also want to address another false narrative that was spread about my conduct at the last board meeting, that I and two others on this board absurdly protested the Pride Month proclamation. This falsehood was spread online, and I would be remiss if I didn't dispel this accusation. A simple Google search would tell you that when I was chair of this board in 2023, I proudly presented the proclamation, and as a matter of fact, was the first to do so within these chambers. Prior to that, it was presented at the Pride Center, and I am proud to be the first supervisor to present the Pride proclamation in these chambers. The supervisors at the last meeting were directed by the chair, which is how the Board of Supervisors operates, at the direction of the chair, to give the proclamation due to the fact that members of the proclamation were constituents within their district and that the Pride Center is in Supervisor Graywall's district. Had I been asked Had I been asked by the chair, I would have gladly done so as I have done previously. Roman and John have done phenomenal work with the center, and I applaud their efforts in providing resources and support services and making Stanlows County more accessible and inclusive to those in the community, of which I have relatives who are also a part of that community, and is why I find it so offensive and personal to me that I feel the need to have to clear up that egregious lie. It's unfortunate that I feel the need to address both of these matters, but as the saying goes, a lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is still putting on its shoes. So again, thank you for bearing with me, I apologize I have to do that, but sometimes you just have to set the record straight.
Thank you, Chance. Any other reports?
I just want to comment, I'm glad I don't read too much social media, thank you. First of all, back to Western Hills and the situation, thank you, Chance, for continuing to be engaged in Supervisor Whitro, that is a tough situation up there. I don't think the public understands the difficulty in it, and trying to find solutions and not pointing fingers is the only way to go. I had something else to say and I've forgotten it, because that just got me off, you caught me off guard there.
That's what I'm good at.
Forget it. The great part about being old, my wife and I have the same conversation three times in a day, and it's always a new one.
Any other reports? Legislative and fiscal management report.
All right, I'll go real quick. I do want to recognize that we do expect by the end of this week to have some form of a state budget, so we're eagerly anticipating what those final numbers might look like, and obviously we'll report out as we discussed during our budget presentation. One item I was pleased to present, or at least provide some hope for us, is Senator Alex Padilla has formally submitted Stanlows County's $1.8 million Del Porto Canyon Public Safety Communications Infrastructure Installation Project as a request to the Commerce, Justice, and Science Subcommittee for consideration and inclusion in the fiscal year 26 Appropriations Bill at the federal level. I just want to highlight this, because this is one of those projects that we've advocated for a couple of different times in DC. We haven't had any traction yet, so we're beginning to get some traction there, and that's positive news for us, we'll see where that goes, thank you.
Can I thank Manny Graywell for working hard, trying to get things included in that budget, thank you.
All right. We do have announcement, I will be giving the state of the county address on Tuesday, July 1, at 9:00 a.m. here in the board chambers, look forward to doing that, should be a fun time, and I guess we're adjourned. And we do have closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this afternoon. The first item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subdivision D1. We have one case, Perez, Alicia Bravo versus Stanlows County et al., that's in the Stanlows County Superior Court, and the case number is CB 24004887. The second item is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6, the agency negotiators of Jody Hayes, Ryan Love, Loop, every damn time, man.
That's three in a row.
Joanna Novara. Labor organizations are listed there on the agenda. With that, appropriate for public comment.
Any public comment on closed session items? Seeing none, we're going to adjourn into closed session. Deputy Taylor, thank you for your overwatch, I know you had a few others back there with you, but thank you for that.